...song and I played drums on that one.
No, no, this is I got in turn.
It was such good songs, like, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I know what a busy time of year it is for everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I know what a busy time it is for everybody. We appreciate your being here and your attention and your dedication to the district. We are going to start with the pledge of allegiance. If I could ask everybody to stand, the flag is over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well called.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Hotwell.
Here.
Sonal Kulcarney.
Here.
We note all board members present, and I would like to kick off the meeting tonight with the first item on our agenda, which is student recognition.
Well, good evening, board and guests. My name is John Gilliam. I am the principal of Vernon Hills High School. Proud to be here in front of all of you tonight as we honor and recognize many of our students who have done remarkable things over the last month. Is Annika Chuti here? All right, I'm just going to hold off on this one. Okay, I'm going to hold off on this one. We're going to bring, so, a team that has dominated and pretty much taken over, it seems like in Lake County and beyond, is our Special Olympics team. And I know we have several of those athletes here tonight to celebrate. So I'm going to bring coaches Compton and Atwell over to introduce some of these kids. Give them a hand.
Well, good evening and thank you for having us. It's a true honor. Our team feels extremely blessed to be supported by everybody in the district, as well as administrators, teachers, the community. It's a really awesome feeling. And just to show our gratitude, we decided to win a few state championships and stuff. So, without further ado, I think they should all get up here because all 20, some of them. Let's go. Hey, really quickly, as quickly as I can. We did win, we won a floor hockey state championship. We had a fourth place in state in bowling. We had two second-place winners in state snowshoeing. We were third in state in traditional basketball. We were first and third in skills, basketball skills, and we won a state championship in unified basketball. That's what all these guys represent, and ladies. And here's their names. John Doherty. Matthew Elman. Xavier Bonados. Noah Hewitt. John Keating. Chase Miller. Azio Morales. Chris Morrison. Ben Peterson. Alex Kuzban. Michelle Runke. Rishi Aru. Abigail Nowecki. Joel Smith. Marco Pesciore. Brendan Larson. Hunter Brockway. Devin Retuckjack. Mark Jeff. Ty Schiff. Parker Dunall. Jack Loser. And Zach Anderson. Thank you. There's a few coaches that had something to do with this too, but Coach Atwell is here, he's over there. And there's also, we did have Coach Morello, Coach Wilkin, Coach Jody, Coach Kelly, and actually Coach Beagle, who was named the, she was the Coach of the Year for Unified Basketball.
All right, then moving on, we have had considerable success in some of our academic competitive teams. And we're going to start tonight with our math team. I'm going to bring up the Vernon Hills math team. So if you're here, Vernon Hills math, come stand over here, and I'm going to introduce Alex Joe. Coach Joe will introduce his fourth place in state math team.
All right, hello. Good evening, board and everyone else. It is my privilege and honor to introduce the, well, part of the Vernon Hills state math team for 2024. We had a pretty good season this year. I'd like to highlight a couple of teams. Our Algebra One team came in second place in state. Our pre-calc team came in second place with Alexi Lopez coming in fifth overall in that team. Our calculator team, yeah, give it up for these guys. Our calculator team came in third place. Our junior, senior two-person came in second, which was pretty exciting because they got to the playoff round and got to do the playoff onstage in the main auditorium. And then, yeah, we came in fourth overall. It's a great accomplishment and a great season, and we'd like to thank everybody for their support. Tonight with us is Jay Kuligara. We've got Stephen Chan. Adit Nai. Adit Nai. We've got Eva Zhang. We've got Aishi Agawal. Aruj Bora. And our senior captain and leader, Alexi Lopez.
We are proud of our Vernon Hills High School district classmates. We always pull for them, except when we face off against them in the arena of, I don't know if it's a math arena or a math field, but we battled the Cougars and we're very proud to celebrate the LHS math team as well. This year, our math team took second in state. And here to introduce the team are three of the great coaches. Ms. Kristy Serens, Mr. Cam Wysork, and Ms. Christine Falkstrom. Come on up, right? And if the LHS math team could come on up.
Thank you, Dr. K, for those kind words. I'm Kristy Serens, and I'm here along with Cam Wysork and Christine Falkstrom. We also have two other coaches, Lisa Davis and Rick Brenner. And we are so proud of this crew that you see in front of you. They have worked hard all year long, but especially in the last month of the season, where we moved up two spots after regionals. And like Dr. K, we placed second in state out of 62 teams. And while this is an entire team event, there were a couple of events that really carried our team. We had an exceptional freshman, sophomore, two-person team. Our orals team got first in state. Also first in state was both our geometry team and our calculator team. I would love to name off all of our members of our team, and if you are here, just please go ahead and step forward to be acknowledged. All right, Sanchari Dasgupta. Nora Fang, first in state calculator team. Haria Harun. Jeremy John. Joshua John, first in state calculator team. Aniket Mandal. Mira Shaw. Eli Tway, first in state geometry team. Arjman Hathi, first in state geometry team and first in state calculator, or oral, sorry, oral. John Joyce. Eddie Lee, first in state geometry. Ian Lee, first in state geometry team and first in state calculator team. Peja Patel, first in state calculator team. Mark Swanson, first in state geometry team and first in state calculator team. Shubh Varshni, first in state geometry team. Justin Wang. Finley Weinstein. Ahan Day, first in state calculator team. Eric Lee. Hayden Louis. Stella Vargas. Alan Wang. Brayden Bradford. Oliver Braun, first in state oral. Cameron Huang, first in state calculator team. Abashai Jalati. Kyle Lee. Aleni Rappa. And Eric Boo. Congratulations to this awesome team.
Sometimes people think the math team only knows numbers, but I was fortunate because after one of their practices this winter, they came out and I was trying to do decorations on the ceiling of the school. And a couple of the math students realized that the ceiling was just a grid. And then if I didn't want to repeat colors, all I had to do was create an algorithm using the grid. And in about three minutes, using no calculators, they had worked out an algorithm for me, and I had no repeating colors of the ornaments I was hanging from the ceiling. So who says math is just theoretical? We found good practical uses for it at LHS, so. We're also extremely proud of another one of our academic teams. And what I love about District 128 is we are powerhouses on the athletic fields and in the academic arenas. And we just had a state march today to celebrate our state champion Science Olympiad team. So we're going to bring up Coach Paul Carnstead to talk about the Science Olympiad.
All right, I also want to give a shout out to our other coach here, Mrs. Kim Holder.
I don't think they'll read this award, but we have the Coaches of the Year for Science Olympiad as well.
I know a bunch of you guys were just up here, but State Team for Science Olympiad, you guys want to come on up here so we can honor you? All right, so, adjusting this height here. So I'm really proud of this team, not just for their accomplishments, but I felt that over the last four years, we had some pretty serious adversity in that, you know, Science Olympiad has a lot of build events to it. And through, like, this one senior's already left here, because their freshman year, we were completely virtual. None of those build events that I think draws students to Science Olympiad. And then the second year was this kind of strange hybrid space that really wasn't as fun as Science Olympiad could be. So my seniors and juniors here actually experienced some Science Olympiad when it probably wasn't at its most fun, but they stuck with it and really helped build up this team. And, you know, I'm just very proud of this group for how they have built such a positive team culture. And it was just so awesome going to state and having so much success. So I think they deserve a round of applause just for the people they are. Got my list on my phone, sorry. All right, so I'm going to call you guys names. There were, when you include trial events, I think 28 events at state, and we medaled in 18 of them. So I'm not going to name off all of them because that would take a long time. So I'm just going to name all their names. So we got Abashai Jalati. Adi Gopal. Aid Cionyes. Arjman Hathi. Aiden Merchant. Cameron Huang. Lee Dreward. Eric Boo. Eric E. Kyle Lee. Shubh Varshni. Prem Acharya. Brayden Bradford. Eddie Lee. Loheeth Bupala. Finley Weinstein. Juno White. Peja Patel. And finally, Ian Lee. Thanks, guys, for an awesome year. And thank you, everybody, for recognizing our team. I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, did Annika Chuti make it? Owen McGory is here? Well, you know what I'm reading anyway? These, uh, these two individuals, one from Libertyville and one from Vernon Hills, are definitely right. They're definitely deserving of recognition. Because each year, every IHSA member school is invited to nominate one female student and one male student for the IHSA Academic All-State Award. Nominees needed to possess a minimum of a 3.5 GPA on a four-point scale, have participated in at least two IHSA-sponsored sports or activities during each of the last two years, and demonstrated outstanding citizenship. The nominations then are evaluated by a committee made up of IHSA principals, activity directors, athletic directors. Of all the nominees, only 26 students were selected this year, and Vernon Hills and Libertyville each have one. Vernon Hills is proud to honor Annika Chuti. Annika was here a couple months ago, recognized for her gymnastics excellence. Annika has a 4.4 GPA on a four-point scale, has participated in gymnastics, track, and diving. In 2022, she was fifth on the all-around and beam. In 2023, she was second in the all-around, fifth on the vault and beam. And this year, Annika was, let's see, fifth on vault, second in state all-around, and a state champion, uh, what was, hold on a second. First state champion in the floor exercise, second on the uneven parallel bars, sixth on the vault, and tying for second in the all-around at the IHSA state meet. Pretty incredible stuff. Most importantly, she's a great student, a great leader, and a wonderful human being. Her coaches describe her as the team's glue, the team's strength, and the team's motivation. We're lucky to have her at Vernon Hills. She's just one of a small handful of Vernon Hills students to ever have earned this award. Let's celebrate Annika Chuti. Owen McGory is the student from Libertyville High School. Owen is a student who competes in, well, you know, because I'm not an all-state academic team member, I left my notes about Owen back at the ranch. But Owen is definitely a football player, he is a wrestler, and I believe track, but it may be lacrosse. So forgive me, Owen, for not knowing your spring sport. I believe Owen is on pace to be a 12, a 12 varsity letter winner. That's three varsity sports for all four years. He has been competing at the highest level, and he has been academically performing at the highest level. He, this year, was all-state in wrestling and has been one of our school leaders on the principal advisory board for all four years that he's been in high school. We are very fortunate to have both of these students, and for Libertyville, a big round of applause for Owen McGory.
Thank you. So before we begin public comment, I'd like to share a few thoughts. In 2021, we welcomed Dr. Denise Herman as our superintendent to advance our district and further its excellence. We remain confident in her abilities and are committed to providing Dr. Herman and her administration with clear goals and holding her accountable to those benchmarks for success. In the U.S. News and World Report High School Rankings released last week, Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School were once again ranked among the very best Illinois high schools. Maintaining our high rankings is a testament to the excellence of our teachers, our students, our staff, and administration under Dr. Herman's leadership. Yet despite this record of excellence, our district is not in compliance with the Illinois Accelerated Placement Act, which is part of the Illinois School Code enacted in 2021. Schools were required to be compliant as of the beginning of the 2023-24 school year. We cannot allow our schools to be impacted by noncompliance, which could result in our loss of recognition by the state, loss of funding, and loss of our IHSA status. A group of community members have expressed concerns regarding Dr. Herman and the changes being made to improve our district for all students. We have worked hard to engage not only this group, but our entire school community, including all current parents and middle school parents from our feeder districts. To engage those larger audiences, last Wednesday, we hosted a webinar titled "Expanding Academic Opportunities for All Students: What It Means for Your D128 Students." Forty-five people attended that webinar, nine of whom were district staff members. The FAQ on our website is being updated to reflect the questions asked during that discussion. No additional feedback was received from the post-webinar feedback form, and 36 people have viewed the video that you can find posted on our website. I would also like to encourage everyone in our school community to view the video posted on our website of Dr. Herman in conversation with our Regional Office of Education Superintendent, Dr. Michael Carner, which clarifies the Accelerated Placement Act. We understand that change is hard and can be scary. Yet, change is necessary to make our excellent schools compliant and to ensure that all students have the opportunity to reach their full academic potential. We have the utmost confidence in our excellent educators. We know they are equipped to handle these changes and will continue to provide outstanding teaching and support to their students. We have and will continue to provide support for our teachers and engage in We have and will continue to provide support for our teachers and engage in ongoing dialogue with them to ensure the successful implementation of this plan. We are listening and carefully considering the concerns that some parents and teachers have expressed about our plan, and, as appropriate, we are making adjustments, which you will hear about tonight in a report from our teaching and learning team. The plan and these changes reflect our ongoing commitment to providing academic rigor and opportunity for all students. We are grateful for the legacy of exceptional teachers, administrators, board members, and supportive community members who have shaped our high schools into the award-winning institutions they are today. We have long been recognized as a district that provides excellent learning opportunities for students. However, our data shows that this was not true for all students. Maya Angelou said, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better." D-128 is committed to doing better for all students. And now, I will open it up for public comment. First on the list, we have Elizabeth Hudson.
My amazing LHS math teacher, the late Mrs. Deb Larson, had a saying, "You gotta wanna." In order to accomplish anything with excellence, you have to want to do it. You gotta wanna. You can do anything you put your mind to. Equally, you could have all the talent in the world, but if you don't have the passion and intensity about wanting to learn, it's invaluable. Thank you, board, teachers, parents, students, for this opportunity to share some thoughts with you this evening. The overall crux of these initiatives has repeatedly been positioned as addressing a problem of access. As a D-128 student myself 30 years ago, and now as a parent, I've seen countless examples that where a desire was expressed for a learning opportunity and a track record of tenacity was shown, it was afforded to the student. Show "you gotta wanna," and it was met with support. I don't believe access to opportunities is an issue here at D-128. Listen, I acknowledge and I recognize it's a serious issue in other parts of the state, but not here. Our teachers are invested in the student's success and the push for excellence. I have been a personal witness to this time and time again, and we've had a history of greatness come through our doors to prove it. We have been doing something right here all these years. We saw that here with the science link, the ad with the math teams with Special Olympics, and so proud to watch that, so proud to see that. But now, these programs that we're trying to push through essentially lower the threshold to access, but see, I don't think that solves the problem. It actually only creates new ones. If a student doesn't have the "you gotta wanna" component of the learning equation, then these things don't work. So while those classes may now be more readily available, we've lost the tenacity of the student who makes the case to be there. I heard it said at the last committee meeting that we don't have a choice in these matters. This is the law, and we have to comply. This doesn't tell me that there's a belief in this program, but that our hands are tied. D-128 has always been a leader in the state in all categories. We saw that. Other districts look to us as an example, and we ask our students to be daring. Let's start modeling what that looks like. If the students, the teachers, the parents, the community, and at least some board members have concerns about these mandates, that, by the way, are backed by 1,000-plus petition signatures, why aren't we pushing back? We are not victims, we are D-128. We're D-128, so let's lead. Dr. Herman said we can do hard things, and yes, we can. We can do the hard thing of pushing back on the state and this initiative and rather roll out programs and solutions that make sense for our school's legitimate issues, not the ones that others struggle with. But whatever we need to tackle, there needs to be a solid plan because it's impacting nearly 4,000 students and their families, as well as generations.
That's three minutes. If you could please wrap it up.
I'm almost done. This cannot be taken lightly. Further, there are some critical stakeholders, the parents and the teachers, which includes the incoming eighth-grade teachers, by the way, who were not involved in these discussions early on. They need to clearly.
Thank you. It's time for the next speaker. I ask you to please cede to the next speaker, which is Sarah Cardinal. Please wrap it up, and out of respect for the next speaker, cede the podium, please. The limit is three minutes, and we ask you to wrap it up after the three minutes. Sarah Cardinal.
I'm Sarah Cardinale, co-president of the D-128 ESP Union, representing the dedicated support staff who tirelessly contribute to the success and safety of our schools. Tonight, I stand before you as a voice for our union to share how concerned we are with the rollout of the new initiatives. For the first time in our district's history, ESP staff have unionized to ensure that our collective voices are heard loud and clear. We are the backbone of this district, encompassing roles from campus safety to administrative support, from IT specialists to paraprofessionals, occupational therapists, and beyond. Despite our invaluable contributions, we find ourselves continually burdened with additional responsibilities while our voices and perspectives are disregarded. The recent proposal to add six new ESP positions as MASH and ARC tutors is yet another example of this trend. While we stand ready to fulfill these duties, we cannot help but question the long-term implications of this initiative. Will ESP staff continue to be the safety net, filling in the gaps left by systemic shortcomings, especially as the initiatives are extended to upper grades in the future? And what assurances do we have that these new positions will not simply serve as a means to extract high-quality work at a lower cost? Additionally, the lack of consultation with our union and the absence of clear job descriptions for these positions only heighten our concerns. We have repeatedly expressed our desire to be included in decision-making processes, as evidenced by the continuous improvement survey results in December. Yet our pleas seem to fall on deaf ears, leaving us feeling undervalued and marginalized. It is disheartening to see a presentation which will be given tonight that purports to nurture a positive climate while failing to acknowledge the vital role or even existence of the D-128 ESP Union. We are not merely a footnote in your agenda. We are essential to the functioning of our district. Without us, there's no graduation ceremonies, no classroom accommodations, no course scheduling, no transcripts for college, no tech support, and no school safety. In closing, as we move forward, it is imperative that the perspectives of frontline employees are not only considered, but actively sought out. Listen to our voices, recognize our worth, and work collaboratively with us to create a better future for our district. We stand in solidarity with our teachers' union advocating for a plan that truly values the contributions of all staff members in our district. These initiatives cannot succeed without the support of the D-128 ESP Union. Thank you.
Robin Cleet.
Wes is actually gonna start us out. Good evening. We're Wes Coleman and Robin Cleet. We're here as parents tonight, and we do not speak on behalf of District 73. On behalf of 1,068 concerned community members who reside within the D-128 boundaries, we respectfully ask that you press pause on simultaneously implementing multiple initiatives this August. It is unacceptable the D-128 teachers' concerns were ignored. It's unacceptable that there was no plan. It's unacceptable to move forward without a comprehensive, well-documented plan. It's unacceptable there are no multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, currently in place. It's unacceptable to implement initiatives that diminish the rigor of honors AP classes. It is unacceptable to replace or remove standalone honors-level classes. It is unacceptable to dismantle our historically high-achieving school district.
While we didn't feel it was appropriate to amend the petition after so many people had signed it, we do acknowledge that some attempt has been made to hastily fashion an MTSS plan, but we find it insufficient for many reasons, the specifics of which we can't enumerate in under three minutes. Similarly, we saw the statement that standalone and standalone honors and AP won't be touched, but we still find that an incomplete description of what it will look like now that the benchmark has changed drastically. The two schools don't even offer the same next most rigorous courses. Please press pause. It is not too late to do the right thing. Thank you.
Carol. Carol, could I take the position? Next is Marnie Navarro.
Good evening. I'm Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident, proud District 70 and District 128 graduate, graduated with Liz George in 1995. I speak to you tonight, again, as always, as a deeply concerned individual parent and taxpayer. Again, President Hassel's comments, introductory comments, are offensive, misleading, continued obfuscation, gaslighting, and fear tactics. I speak now to the board. Our duly-elected representatives, who hold fiduciary duties to our students and our taxpayers, and most importantly, to our community, who have historically been able to trust that our students and taxpayers are in competent and trustworthy hands, those days are over. As we brace for receipt of our property tax bills this week, among the highest in the nation, I wish to read some facts into the public record. Fact: District 128 has $100 million annual budget, a 72% surplus, and spends $28,000 a year per student. Fact: Since July 21, Superintendent Herman has added four new hires in three newly-created administrative roles, six-figure roles, in the past three years, signing and binding our district to three-year contracts on unproven commodities at a whopping cost of $2.5 million. Fact: Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning Isenia Sanchez, Superintendent Herman's handpicked choice, received $255,000 a year. She was the lead on two of the four imminently impending initiatives. She was put on fully-paid administrative leave in November for the remainder of the school year in exchange for dropping her discrimination claim against our district, cost to our taxpayers $510,000. Fact: Superintendent Herman hired Brian Wegley on an interim basis to backfill Sanchez's position, cost to taxpayers $850 an hour. A second Herman hire, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services Ellis Bowen, has been missing in action since 2/26, and a newly-received FOIA document confirms she's also making a discrimination claim against our district, cost to us taxpayers another half a million dollars. In addition to all this, we are hemorrhaging money on expensive outside consultants exceeding $300,000, Equal Opportunity Schools $88,000, Tony Frontier $3,500 a day. Oh, it goes on and on. Against this backdrop, you all extended her contract for five more years at a cost of $1.5 million. To add insult to injury, $17,000 for her personal office furniture, a new kitchen for the sparsely attended administrative office while LHS crumbles down. I am not the enemy. We parents are not the enemy. I am merely sharing information that I've learned from copious amounts of time and effort to get to the truth. I don't want to be here tonight. I want to be at Highland for the orientation for my only child. But I'm here. I'm here because I care about my child, all of our children. I'm trying to downfield block for the incoming classes. Many of us have returned to raise our children here primarily for the historical strength of our schools, and it has been hijacked largely due to the trusting nature and the complacency of our community. Oh, don't you cut me off. Our kids and community are worth fighting for, and make no mistake, we will fight. Five of the seven.
Amy France. Back on. All right, good evening. First of all, I just want to thank those of you that have worked really hard over the last couple weeks to piece together a starting plan with some additional supports. However, with that said, I need to point out that what was done is still not a foundational MTSS plan. Within a multi-tiered system of support, student interventions need to be a continuum of time-bound and smart interventions, which means they are specific, measurable, and consistent. This would require a synthesized data system as a foundation that all staff has access to with agreed-upon standardized metrics to drive student mastery across that continuum. The district-level architects of the MTSS plan and our grading and assessment pilot, which should have been step one operationally, have been missing for much of this year, as has been mentioned. This was not brought to the attention of this board until March. You need to start asking the question, "Why did that not happen until March?" At last week's webinar, it was asked, "How will students access Tier One supports?" Dr. Herman replied, "All of the Tier One supports will be available to every student, and we will over-communicate how and where and when to get those supports." So according to our student data that was presented at the committee meeting on 4/15, about 90% of our students are using reteaching and retakes as a Tier One intervention. So if this is part of our MTSS, and I have no problem with the principle of this idea as retakes for MTSS, we need the following questions answered. Where will all the retesting be done to accommodate all these additional movers? In the testing center with additional staff? Or are our teachers' time that is already maxed out gonna be doing reteaches, reteaching and retakes? What is the specific percentage for non-mastery set by the district so that students will have equity in grading practices? MTSS is about mastery of skills. It's not about grades. Who and when do students work with for each class to provide more instructions? Can train paras in the MASH and ARC support our new honors and AP-level coursework? Why is this important? Because currently, two students in the same college prep course who have different teachers have very different experiences. Bobby has Teacher A and did not complete his homework before the test. Therefore, he is unable to take a retake. Since he got a 70% on the test, he gets a C in the class. At the same time, Lucy, who has Teacher B and also didn't turn in her homework and got a 70% on the test, the exact same metric, is allowed to take a retake. She gets an A on the test and ends up with an A in the class. First of all, this is not equitable, but more importantly, it does not give us measurable mastery data across all sections so that we can evaluate our curricular success. Many of these policy changes were made before operational procedures were put into place, and my fear is the students that you are aiming to help the most with these changes will be the ones that are hurt the most. Thank you for your time.
John Hetzel.
Good evening. No matter what you think of me as a person or my personality.
No matter what you think of me as a person, or my personality, is irregardless to the fact that you guys have a fiduciary responsibility and a duty to this community to listen to the teachers and to the parents, as well as the students. And up until this point, it's been very apparent you've been working in asylum. Ms. Hassel, you lied at the opening statement. You said you've been listening, but we've got almost 20 months of roundtable notes where we have teachers who have expressed great concern. You've heard me for 18 months, and you've heard several other parents. You also have a staff survey that was not very favorable for Ms. Herman or the administration. So you are not listening. You have been operating in asylum. That's a bad place to be because you are not including being equitable and inclusive to the society and the community that we have here. So, the board has been negligent, and it needs to be accountable for itself. We have found that there is a lot of precarious issues and problems that are taking place in this district from a financial point of view, as pointed out, and has issues at other levels that are really scary to this district. You have a steadfast, a steadfast support from Ms. Herman, but we have seen that she also has a history that's similar to what's going on here now in this district where it's disruptive. You've heard me call that out. The arrogance towards the teachers and the parents and the community and ignoring them is a big red flag, and it concerns everyone here that's been paying attention. And when you have over 1,000 people's signatures on a petition, when you're daring mission statement that you did your survey on, you've got less than 300 parents support you. We have 1,100 almost parents in this community that support this initiative, but you're not listening. You doubled down in your opening statement, Ms. Hassel. So, there's evidence of a toxic culture here as well, by evidence by what's going on with Ms. Herman and having an EEOC antiracial discrimination claim filed. But we're daring, and we have DEI. But why is it that those two individuals that she handpicked have filed lawsuits against us? And what is the cost of that to our district and our taxpayer money? So, there's evidence of this gross financial mismanagement. You're costing the taxpayers a lot of money. We can't make this stuff up. We speak truth and we speak fact, and we would be willing to supply anybody in this community the documents for it because we FOIA'd a lot of them. So, if the high school rankings are so great to this community, why are you tearing apart the education system? Lastly, I think we need to have a town hall meeting. I think you need...
Michael Shink.
I think his last statement was have a town hall meeting. Good evening, and the root word of community is common, sharing one or many characteristics, characteristics across a boundary established geographically on one end of the spectrum to a metaphorical boundary on the other end. We all share a common boundary tonight, our children's future in District 128 and their development in this stage of life to further acquire skills to take on the harsh realities of the world. I say "our" district because that's exactly what it is. It belongs to us. We have employees at the district. Some may reside in our community, some may not. Of those employees, we have administrators, teachers, support staff, maintenance, security, many others I apologize for leaving out. We have elected officials, seven of them to be exact, all part of this community and all volunteers, that are charged with creating policy and putting the right people in place that will execute these policies. They are then tasked overseas to ensure results being delivered. We don't expect our elected officials to have backgrounds in education or business or even politics. We elect them because we believe they will watch over our district and be good stewards of the taxpayer. Why do I all, why do I give us this quick civic lesson? I'm a 21-plus-year resident of Vernon Hills, an active member of the community, and a parent of three. I thank my blessings every day for the community we live in, but I'm disappointed to see this divide in our community. Frontline teachers with decades of experience not supporting the new initiatives, community members asking for a pause because parents are worried about the effect it will have on their children, and in the meantime, I've yet to hear anyone in the community even speak on behalf of the new initiatives. And that's not even taking into account the current financial position of the district I mentioned at the last meeting. I understand we need to be in compliance. Not sure why the previous superintendent and board didn't set us on a course to be compliant, but maybe a pause on the other initiatives that aren't required and reducing an already loaded administration budget will be a good start. We have recently heard more questioning of policies by some of our board members, and I applaud you. Based on some of your concerns at the last few meetings, maybe some of you want to pause, but may not feel comfortable. Believe me, our community will support you if you do. Keep in mind, if at least four board members are not willing to go with what they believe is needed to pause, we will just continue on the current path. Maybe it's time to act. You all should know what your board procedures are to alter course. Seven officials, seven votes of all equal value, majority rule. Finally, tonight, I want to talk about a word, and it's ego. A healthy ego can be a good thing for people trying to navigate through life. Let's face it, your ego allowed you to choose to run for the school board because you believe you can help support the needs of our community. There's nothing wrong with that. But ego can also be a detriment, especially when an egotistic mindset affects when policy turns out to not be the best for the community. Ego will now become a barrier because resist to change course may become your first line of defense to protect your ego. One of the greatest qualities a person can possess is the ability to freely admit when they are wrong, understand why, and be able to change course, in this case, to the betterment of the community. So I ask one simple request to consider tonight, trust your instincts, trust your instincts, community over ego. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? If you wouldn't mind, just state your name.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Rich. Good evening. I have a senior and a junior at Libertyville High School and an incoming freshman, and like lots of folks here, I'm also a taxpayer in this community. I want to start by appreciating you for your service, the amount of your own time. I know you must volunteer to thinking about and planning for the future of our kids and our community is really unparalleled. I'm sure there are many rewards to this work, but many things that you're missing with your own families and personal lives to be here, so thank you for that. I think thoughtful conversation and debate about the future of our schools is important, and I also want to make sure we are deeply listening to all the people who have a stake in this conversation, particularly the students who are moving out of Striving Learner classes and those who are taking advantage of diagonal movement opportunities for the first time next year. I want to hear what kinds of support they think they need now and what kinds of support they will need as the year progresses, and I want to hear what their parents need too. And then I want to make sure we are using all of the expertise of our world-class teachers and tutors to flexibly and thoroughly meet those needs. My kids have moved diagonally between regular honors and AP classes a lot over the last four years, and there are moments in every class when they get the material, and there are moments when they deeply don't get the material. Whether they decide to ask for help mostly depends on whether they think that help is going to be helpful, but I feel like they don't often get asked. I encourage the board and the administration to please have more of these conversations with our students at the table because ultimately, I know everyone in this amazing community wants all of them to succeed, and they are the best able to tell us what that is going to take. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, just state your name.
I'm Katie Study. I'm also a graduate of 128 and 70. My kids are in 70 now, and I just found out about all of this mess like a week ago. So I don't, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare, but I did feel compelled to come and say something because I have noticed in our districts, especially since the COVID issues, when you closed the doors on us, you, you don't correct, of course. You just plow forward with mistakes and double down, and you did it in that opening speech I heard. It was really obnoxious to do that, I think, and disrespectful and unnecessary. Anyway, I just wanted to let you, just ask, beg, plead with you to just stop and think and reconsider because from what I've heard, it's not working. And if I understand correctly, the kids can't go back to the level, right? You're not allowed to answer. Anyway, but that's ridiculous. If it's not working for them, why can't they go back to the level where they were successful? You also have to consider the test scores and whatever, the teacher recommendations. Don't take into account that there are kids in this community that don't have time to spend three hours on homework or night or to meet with extra staff and do extra homework. They might be watching their brothers and sisters or have a job that's going to pay for their college, you know? So, and they're just doing what they can. So, I really, I get that it's a state mandate and we live in this state and, you know, Pritzker's in charge of us, but take a minute, and like they said, we used to lead, we don't anymore. 128 proved that so much with COVID when you kept us closed out. But you guys really need to start leading again because we were the example for the state when we went to high school. I'm so proud to be a graduate, and now, like, I'm considering karma, and that will break my family.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jack Birmingham, and I'm a senior at Libertyville High School. Want to thank all the teachers who are here. Had a lot of you guys before. I think it's always important to speak up for what you believe in. Before I came to the meeting tonight, I was debating whether or not I should even say anything because I couldn't really determine what to say. Now I think I know what I do need to say. There's a quote that I like to think of sometimes, and it's by Winston Churchill, who's about as good as you can be at leading, or was at least. Look, Winston Churchill once said, "A pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity while an optimist sees opportunity in every difficulty." And as part of the daring mission at D-128, we have time and time again been able to overcome and surmount different obstacles that have stood in our path. Why should the state's mandate be any different? It is a mandate. It is a law. Laws can be unwritten. Laws can be peacefully protested. We, we've seen it before. We've seen a group of students walk into school without masks because they believed what was happening to them was unfair. We have seen people overcome odds and go against, some of the greatest minds in history have done incredible things, and they did not get there by doing things by the books or doing things because their superiors told them. They did these things because they had the courage to speak up for what was right and stand up for what they believed in. I'm not a teacher. I'm not an educator. I'm not an administrator. I'm not an economist. I'm not, I don't, I mean, I work at a movie theater, right? I don't have a lot, I don't have a lot where it's like, I have this huge platform to stand on and I can preach to all you guys. But I am a senior. I'm graduating. I leave behind a little sister in this district. She's going to be a senior next year, and I'm worried that in a year where she's supposed to be planning a grad party and thinking about prom and all the things that she's going to do with her friends, she's going to be burdened and weighed down by the impact of the decisions that are being made here tonight. And I have to ask, for the sake of my sister, for the sake of friends that I leave behind, for the sake of friends I have at other schools who have not been forced to conform to these same policies, is this really in the best interest of our students? We live in a world now where student mental health, student well-being, and others are becoming issues of huge concern, huge concern. It's the reason why I go to meetings like principals advisory boards, the reason why I campaign for causes that I believe in because truly, the purpose of an education is not to give students something that they don't look forward to. It is to give them something that they believe will prepare them for their future. My mom is a choir companyist, a entry-level teaching position at Libertyville High School. Before I was even in Libertyville, before the family had even moved, when she got that position, she was incredibly excited about how we were the best. We were number one. The way I see it, nothing needed to change, so why are we changing?
Would anybody else like to address the board?
My name is Rick Navarro. I am a parent, a grandparent of students of Libertyville High School, Rockland, Rockland Robbins, not Raptors, and Highland School. I've been here for, going on 41 years in the school district. I have three children, you all the way through, two educators, but you've had one of them very, very closely, a litigator. And I have to tell you, in 41 years, I have never seen anything like this, and I am ashamed of what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Socrates Vella, Vernon Hills. Thank you all for being here and to listening to us. I'd like to take the moment and recognize all the great teachers that are here. Thank you for everything you do. Principal G. Thank you. It really bothers me that there's been a couple of us that have been coming to these board meetings, and it's pretty interesting to see how many people have joined us, from mask mandates to surveys to, to this, this thing we're trying to do. If we looked at the actual law, the way it's written, there's nothing that says that things are mandatory. Now, this fee grabbed it and did something else with it, then that's a different story, but it's not a law to do this whole thing 70-30, or it's not a law to do mandatory advancement. So, let's just get that, get that out in the open. And like the student said, my daughter was one of those kids that busted the door open for, to basically make a statement, and then everything ensued from that. Proud of her of doing that, but I wish we weren't here again. It's always seems to be like this us against you, and it's exhausting. I'd rather not be here. Benjamin Kara, we had dialogue before you joined the board on Facebook. You came across as a super pro teacher, and I just don't understand how your voting record has not really exemplified that. I still have my message that we went back and forth on that. So, please, board members. Lisa Hassel started out the meeting by saying she's reached out to community members, and in December, there was this community engagement thing that the board was trying to do. Again, please try to retract some of that $91,000. I keep harping on that. We could use that money. I think the board members are able to pull that money back. But John Hetzel and I were at that meeting, and we thought it was about figuring out how to connect with the community, and it wasn't about that. It was about how to see if we were warmed to the idea of a referendum in November. And then somehow, we later heard that there was a committee that was assembled, I guess it was handpicked, and John Hetzel and I are the ones that have been coming to the board meetings. I looked over to him, and I asked him, "Did they invite you?" So, your opening statement, Ms. Hassel, you know, that shows a hole in that there with that. So, just, just, you know, let your egos go, whatever it is. We've been here a long time, this community. Dr. Herman is new, so which one's the outlier?
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Ann Landgraf. I do like to thank all the board members who are volunteers, who are not paid for this job right now, and it's not always easy. I've been attending the last three meetings, and I did speak at the last... I've been attending the last three meetings, and I did speak at the last, last couple of meetings, but I've had many, many years of coming to board meetings. The thing that stands out to me is I've been going to board meetings since 1997, I think, and there's always been two groups, at least two different kinds of opinions in the audience. And this time around, I've only heard one opinion, and that is... We need to check what we're doing. We need to make sure that this is the right thing. So many parents, so many teachers have said that we're, we're going too fast, we're going in the wrong direction, we need more support. You haven't heard anybody else's opinion. There's no other side that's come forward. I was waiting to hear that. That's why I wanted to speak near the end, because I wanted to count how many people were going to have the opposite opinion, and no one has. At least I didn't hear it. So, please, please, just pause and, and check things over. You don't have to do everything at once and find out what's best for the kids.
Hi, I'm John Hope. I have two kids at LHS. Here's the fact. I don't think you need to do all these initiatives at once. I think your bigger problem is the fact that you have a split community here right now. You have administration and teachers so divided that nothing's going to get done. And I could invoke Abraham Lincoln's House Divided Speech, but I won't. But that's what you need to focus on now. Forget the initiatives. Focus on getting this community, district, back to being a community together. I think the administrators and you people here should probably go into the schools and see what's happening before you put initiatives into place, all right? Talk to the community. They know what they're doing, what they're going through. All right? That's more important than any initiative that comes on, because I used to be an educator, and I know about initiatives. They come every two or three years, and they tend to be a waste of time. So why don't you focus on what's important, which is our students and our teachers and our community? Let's make this a community again, all right? These meetings shouldn't be like this.
Good evening. My name is Robin Sherman. I have three children in D-128. Frankly, I wasn't going to speak tonight, because I know you guys don't care what any of us have to say. As many have said, it's a one-way thing. We talk, and then you get up and you say a spiel, and we can't respond to anything that you guys say over and over again. I've heard from several community members who have reached out to the board that have gotten responses that there is a lot of misinformation going on in the community. All the misinformation is coming from the board, because you are not having dialogue with us. Have a town meeting where we can have an exchange back and forth, and not us saying how we feel, and then you countering us, and we just have to take that at face value. The only information I need in this community is from all of these people. All of these teachers have the guts to get up in front of you, to stand up for what they believe in. That is all the information that I need. If they do not feel strong in these initiatives, then we need to step back and say, are we doing what is right? And these people over here are paying the bills for all these initiatives. So if we have concerns, you better start listening to us, because we are getting fed up.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Maria Monahan. I have a son who graduated from LHS last year. I have a freshman, and I have a sophomore currently attending LHS. I just want to say, I don't see anybody up here as the enemy. I really think you've been bamboozled. I mean, you had some expert teachers, charged top dollars, and the architects of this fiasco turned around and sued you, and they're laughing all the way to the bank. So I think you've been victimized. I think we all have. But I think it's time to say that the emperor has no clothes. Anybody who knows me can tell you this, and my kids will agree with some embarrassment. I'm kind of cheap, okay? And I don't expect anybody here to buy office furniture secondhand, the way I buy everything secondhand. I'm not saying you have to cruise garage sales or go to the same thing as Nepal thrift shop, but $17,000 for office furniture offends my sensibilities. So, I know how to squeeze the dollar till the eagle screams. So, if anyone ever would like to go shopping and just wants somebody to come along and help you find a good deal, I'll help you out. I volunteer.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Is anybody else interested in addressing the board tonight? Going once. Okay. We will move on to our teacher union report.
Hi. My name is Nikki Oshewski, and I am currently serving as the union treasurer. Thank you for hearing this month's D-128 union message. I'd like to take a moment to thank all school staff, student volunteers, and parent organizations for making the D-128 staff feel valued during Staff Appreciation Week. Thank you. In light of this week, I would also like to acknowledge the D-128 ESP Union, our sister union. We would not be as successful as we are without our ESP's hard work and help both in and out of the classrooms. Know that you are truly appreciated. Our union recently sent out a poll survey to our members, and the results, one of the questions was, "How would you rate the current trustworthiness of district administration and its decision-making?" The question gave a rating of a six-point scale, one being, "I don't trust at all what's being communicated," and six being, "I have utmost trust in what the district admin is sharing." Of the 145 members that responded, 133 members rated this question as a one or a two. Let me say this another way. 91.7% of the staff members who responded gave a response indicating that they have little to no trust in the district administration and its decision-making. Not one staff member rated the question above a four on a six-point scale. So tonight, I would like to focus on the theme of trust between the teachers and the district administration, and help explain why that level of trust has broken down over the last several years. I'm going to paint the picture by sharing my personal journey, specifically focusing on the move to heterogeneous classes and the intervention program. While my story is only one account, my path mirrors many other frustrated teachers in the district. I'm a 23-year veteran of this district, and I have taught every model of the Elder One Intervention Program for 21 of those years. In April 2023, I attended a meeting and was told that the team-taught classes for our striving learners were not successful and were going to be eliminated and replaced by heterogeneous classes. This was news to me. Why hadn't anyone talked to me or any other teacher in these classes before deciding to eliminate a program? Where's the data that backed this, and what is the measurement for determining whether a program is successful? The district responded by showing us that students in these programs were not meeting standardized test scores, yet they only use the data from COVID classes to back that claim. They showed us that percentage of minority students and low-income students are more prevalent in the team-taught classes. When the students get to the high school level, they are well along on their academic path. D-128 educators excel at meeting students where they are and helping them grow in their knowledge. Why were we not shown growth data over the span of their four high school years in these student populations to determine the success or failure of team-taught classes? Where is the data that shows how many students graduated out of team-taught classes from year to year due to the success that they had with the supports and foundations they received in those team-taught classes? The district administration told us that the students' place in team-taught classes were stigmatized. Was there a survey sent out to the students to ask what they felt about the program? I actually invited Director of Equity and Inclusion, Mr. Larry Varne, to observe my team-taught class last year. He came in, and he was surprised that students told him it was one of their favorite classes, and that they loved having two teachers and a smaller class size to help them learn. Another reason given for the district admin's push for heterogeneous classes was to expose all students to grade-level curriculum. I'd like to clear up that myth right now by letting you know that our ninth-grade team-taught level curriculum is grade-level. We teach the same lessons on the same days and give the same assessments. The only difference for the team-taught class is a smaller class size, another teacher in the room to help, and specifically for math at LHS, another period to process the content. After the meeting last April, teachers were starting to get concerned. While heterogeneous classes is a noble initiative, we were not sure, based on the data presented to us, that this change was needed in our district. We were being asked to take our most vulnerable students and remove the supports that enable them to stay at the same pace as their peers. The data and rationale presented to us was not convincing us, and we wanted to spend more time researching and processing this major change. Despite our concerns, we were told we needed to press on, and this change was coming in the very near future. So we needed to start planning. But the good news was that we were told that in lieu of the team-taught classes, we were able to design an intervention program for our striving students. At the May 8, 2023 School Board Program Personnel Committee meeting, Dr. Herman stated, quote, "We have really smart staff, and we really believe that they are going to design something that supports all learners." So our team-taught teachers spent countless hours developing an intervention program we thought would work for our striving learners to get the support that they need. Our plan was to put teachers in a small room with a handful of our most vulnerable students, teaching them and pre-teaching them curriculum during a full study hall, pause, or tutorial class. After months of planning for the best option to help our students, the admin presented their intervention plan, only to find it contained little of what we had planned. Imagine how our, how our trust in the leadership was shaken when part of the district admin's plan went directly against what we wanted. The current plan calls for taking our team-taught experts, the ones who have years of experience helping our striving learners understand our content and curriculum, and having them teach students basic skills through computer-based lessons like NearPod. The plan calls for putting mostly support staff, not our content, content experts, in charge of reteaching, pre-teaching curriculum during half-period lunch. Let me echo our sister union's concerns mentioned during the public comment today, that we are unsure if this position is truly in the current ESP job description. As stated by Ms. Cardenale, is this a way for the district to yet again get high-quality work at a lower salary? Let me reiterate that one of the main reasons the admin wanted to go away from team-taught classes was that they felt it created a stigma for these students. In this plan, students would be required to leave their peers during their lunch to get extra help. Talk about putting the spotlight on them. You had promised in the PNP meeting last May by Dr. Herman that, quote, "Our teachers will come up with what they feel is right," end quote. The current plan does not feel right. We are moving away from a striving learners program that taught grade-level curriculum in a small class setting with extra teachers in the classroom, to a program in which striving learners are put in larger class sizes with one teacher, and they may or may not get the help they need during a half-period lunch with an ESP member who may or may not be a content expert. How does it hurt me for us teachers to give up countless hours on a committee to design an intervention program that we feel is best for our students, only to have the district administration change that program to their liking without consulting us? I wish I could say this has happened only to the intervention team, but truth be told, our district administration is developing a habit of changing part or all of committee plans at the 11th hour. For example, when the grading and assessment plan was rolled out to the staff in February 2024, a last-minute component was added by the district administration that gave special education teachers no say in the grading policies for their own classroom. What's worse was that the plan was presented to staff as what teachers had decided, when teachers on this committee reported that they were never consulted about this last-minute change. The result of the administrators' dismissal and adjustment of teachers' work without a discussion with those teachers is a frustrated staff. In fact, in the survey I mentioned earlier, there was a question asking members, asking if members feel valued in their work by the district administration. Again, the question contained a six-point scale, one being, "I don't feel heard or valued," and six being, "I feel very seen and heard." 124 out of 145 teachers, or 85.5% of those surveyed, rated this question a one or a two. Not one union member rated this question a six, that they feel very seen and very heard. Our trust is broken. It seems that our voice, our thoughts, our expertise, our concern for what's best for our students and our time means little to the district administrators who override our hard work. So we push on. The intervention program is happening. The plan is not our own and is constantly changing by the administration, and we have four weeks left of school and have only been told a draft version of what will occur next year. The district has ensured all the stakeholders that we have been trained, and we are ready for heterogeneous classes. At the April 15 board meeting, VHS Principal John Gilliam stated that training can be dated back to 2015, but training for differentiated instruction in classes that are grouped by ability level is not the same as training for differentiated instruction in a heterogeneous classroom. Not to mention that this training is from 10 years ago, does not address the post-COVID student or the needs facing our teachers today. Good ideas from our instructional coaches have only been available to teachers who volunteered to give up their lunch period. We have had a few brief sessions offered during institute days, specifically towards heterogeneous class preparation. There may be a summer course offered, but we haven't heard anything yet. In the May 8, 2023 PNP meeting, the board members asked Mr. Varne how teachers will be trained to meet the needs of students. Mr. Varne responded that the partner we'll be working with to train our staff is the Equal Opportunity Schools, or the EOS program. To date, the only thing that program has done is identify students who could potentially be diagonal movers. The district admin said they hired an educational consultant, Tony Frontier, to help us prepare. Yet the only thing we accomplished through our time working with Mr. Frontier is to align content standards across the district. Neither of these consultants focused on instructional training for teachers and heterogeneous classes. Once again, our trust is broken. We were given no time this year to work with our peers to prepare and brainstorm pedagogical strategies. In the same survey I mentioned before, 120 out of 145 union members, or 82.8%, stated that the morale in the building amongst staff members is as low as, or nearly as low as, they can remember. Why is morale so low? I believe it's due to the lack of trust between the district administration and the teachers. How do we fix this broken partnership? What will help us at this moment in time? What do we ask for as a union? District administrators, our ask to you is to please learn from the mistakes that have been made over the last few years. Moving forward, our messages, our message to you is to please trust your staff in all phases of planning for a change. Involve us in the research process to ensure the change is needed. Allow us to design the programs that you promised we could. If there are changes that need... If there are changes that need to be made to the programs we create, work with us to find a solution that we can all back. Give us the support and time we need that does not coincide with our much-needed breaks like lunch or our summer to work with our colleagues to make meaningful, productive change. And finally, acknowledge when timelines need to slow down so that we ensure our initiatives are implemented properly. Board of Education, our ask to you is that you continue to ask the hard questions and challenge our district administration to be the leaders that our teachers, students, and community needs. Leaders that we can place our trust in once again. President John Quincy Adams said, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." I will add that only when the stakeholders truly believe that they are valued, heard, and respected can our trust in our district administration and their ability to lead us be restored. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our union on these matters tonight.
The board has listened and noted all of them. At this point, I would like to do a quick review of our agenda. We are going to have our student school board representative reports, followed by our foyer requests, and then Dr. Herman will share some additional good news. Then we will move into our consent vote agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion, minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, ed tour requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do we have any items on the consent vote agenda that board members wish to separate tonight?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, after we finish the consent vote agenda, we will move on to items for action. Coming out of the Program and Personnel Committee, we will review a request for staffing to expand support for students, our consolidated district plan, 2024-25 textbook adoption requests, ed tour requests, employment of employees, the annual education support staff, ESP staffing report. And then out of FNF, we will discuss the intergovernmental agreement for hearing itinerant with District 170. Oh, I'm sorry, that's still with PNP. Continuing with the items that came out of the PNP committee, the 2024-2025 proposed committee and board meeting schedule. And then from FNF, we will discuss the Lakeside Transportation Extension, the bid approval for the demolition of the structures at 911 and 915 West Park Avenue. We will approve an alternate bid for the floor ceiling of the LHS cafeteria and consider an approval for the custodial maintenance and ground services with HES. Moving on to items for discussion, we'll have a first reading of some board policies, and we will have the fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget introduced. And for information, we will have Dr. Herman's report. We will discuss board comments and events. Do we have an IASB report tonight? Nothing from IASB. Do we have a CEDAL report tonight? No CEDAL report. Any other reports that board members wish to discuss, if they have information to report, will be discussed at that time. Finally, we will discuss future agenda items. There is a list in the board packet, and we will see if there's any additional items for the FNF or May board meeting. Finally, we will convene an executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters under Illinois Code 5ILCS120/2C2, as well as the employment of employees under 5ILCS120/2C1. Finally, we will move to reconvene in open session. No action will be taken when we return to open session, and then we will be journeying. So at this time, it is my pleasure to turn it over to our student school board representatives for their reports.
Good evening. Tonight, I will discuss student excitement for a new principal and upcoming events LHS clubs are hosting and inviting the board to join us. Last week, Dr. K., our current principal, announced that Dr. Ray Albin, who is our current assistant principal, will be the new principal as Dr. K. becomes the new assistant superintendent starting in the 2024-2025 school year. Some students helped with the interview process to contribute to that decision. Junior Jana Abdul Rahman, who was part of the school building tour interview, said, "Having a familiar face around felt very comforting. It was really nice to see that he knew where everything was and how all the technology worked at LHS." She also discussed how when students first found out that Dr. K. will no longer be principal, they felt quite stressed out. But after announcing that Dr. Albin will fulfill that position, they were content because it was someone they already knew and used to seeing around in the halls. As someone who has been part of Principal's Advisory Board on the Teaching and Learning Committee for the past three years, I have a lot of experience in terms of collaborating with Dr. Albin, and I'm confident that he will be an amazing principal. I would also say that Dr. Albin is the brain and Dr. K. is the face of our main office and all the communication that happens within LHS. So I know for a fact that hiring someone internal who is a professional in our school system was a great decision. The Student Prevention and Wellness Department and the Psychology Club have been working hard to plan our Mental Health Awareness Month 5K fundraiser, which will be on Sunday, May 5th at 10:00 a.m. Another upcoming event we have been working on at Best Buddies is the Annual Talent Show, which will be held on May 9th at 5:30 p.m. at the LHS Studio Theater. I'm inviting all the board members to join us, and I'm really looking forward to seeing you there. This month, the Theater Department put on their final production of the year, Dancing at Lou Nasa, which follows the story of an Irish family and their five daughters and what the future brings. It was performed on April 18th through the 20th and featured two different casts. This show featured 17 of our LHS students with nine in each cast. River Thompson, a junior who played Jack, said, "It was a lot of work to put together, but the end product was really fantastic. It was such a tight-knit group by the end and such a great bunch of people." Friend Fry, another junior, mentioned that this show challenged her in a way she hadn't expected. She said, "First of all, the play was a drama. This means that we had a lot of focus on portraying realistic, deep emotions, as well as dimensional characters." The other more obvious challenge was tackling the Irish accent. Sophie Figarelli, a member of the crew, said, "It was a lot of fun for our last show of the year. I'm going to miss all of the seniors so much. Many of these seniors have been part of the program since their freshman year at LHS, so it's a bittersweet moment for many of them." The Theater banquet will honor these seniors and their work in the Theater Department this coming May. Thank you.
Good evening. Switching gears to a more policy-based topic is our grading structures. After speaking with a variety of students from various grades, class structures, and departments, I thought it was important to bring up concerns and perspectives that many students have voiced over upcoming grade policy, test-piloted grading structures, and past policies. I asked them about how they felt about three issues: the 1-5 grading scale, the minimum grade default, and the already-in-place testing retake policies. These were just some of the topics I've heard discussed around LHS. While these policies were created with good intent and plenty of thought into it to accommodate students returning from COVID and helping to assist with social-emotional needs, it seems to actually create some stress and confusion for some students. The perspectives I share are not to favor one side or the other, but my purpose is to share the various opinions and perspectives of students. With the new grading practice of the 1-5 scale, it's been a mix of reviews. For many students, what they've received was confusion. They didn't understand the purpose of having this different type of grading scale and why the old and traditional policy was changed. Some felt it was restricting, while others thought it mirrored the AP scoring, giving them a better picture of how they might score in the upcoming AP tests, starting in May. A senior student stated it like this, "This new policy instills the AP-style scoring across all courses. I understand the implementation for AP courses, but not every student should take those, and not every student should." Some students feel that there is too large of a gap between each point and percentage/letter grades allow for a more accurate depiction of students' performance. Lastly, with the test-piloted grading scale this year, some students found it difficult as their classes weren't all graded the same. One course might use the 50-100 scale while other piloted the 1-5 policy. Students discussed how the inconsistent grading practice across departments and classes is confusing and sometimes difficult to navigate. However, some students really haven't noticed a change and feel that if their teacher is fair in grading, they don't have an issue. To some, it doesn't feel different, and as long as they get a grade, it doesn't matter. As a summary for those students that are aware, it seems there's a lack of understanding of what the grading system means, why it's being implemented, and a lack of understanding of why teachers can use a 1.5 scale versus the 50-100 point scale. What I understand is maybe better communication on what the policy means for each student may be helpful for clarity purposes. In regarding to the 40% minimum floor grade, most students did not favor it for two reasons. The first issue they voiced was they felt that if a student do well, they shouldn't get the, they should, excuse me, I'm going to repeat that just to make sure. The first issue they voiced was that they felt if a student didn't do well, they should get the score they earned and not a default 50%. One student put it this way, "It's not fair to give students points they did not earn. If they took a test and got a 30%, they shouldn't be automatically getting an extra 20% when there are students that are working to earn those points." The students thought that it didn't seem fair. It was not benefiting students who were automatically getting a 50% as they were producing 50%, but were still being rewarded for it. One point that could be clearer to our student body is the reasoning behind this 50% default rate. Some understand the purpose is to help students who make poor academic choices, or for students who had a difficult time in assignment, have the ability to bounce back later and do well with their grades overall, while others disagree or just don't understand the policy. Secondly, they felt that by giving an automatic 40% for assignments that students didn't complete or turn in still wouldn't motivate students to do better. Meaning if a student gets a 0% in the grade book, it would motivate students more to take the test and try harder as opposed to automatically earning a 40% in the grade book for doing nothing. Two students commented on this topic to represent the two different perspectives and spoke for multiple student inputs. The first said, "I understand the gap between a 0 and 40% is large and require more students to make up more percentage-wise, but students seeing their grades drop from missing work or lack of preparation is more of an incentive to complete or retake the assessment or assignment that would be dropping their grade." The second perspective was stated by a junior saying, "I like the 40% policy because it lets students still receive credit for assignments, so it limits how much it affects their final grades." Others disagree with giving students free points that they did not earn. This is the last concern regarding grading, is the already-in-place testing retake, which was met with a mixed opinion. The first perspective is that retakes policies get abused and is not used correctly. This perspective stated by a senior is, "I don't think retakes should be free. I think you should have to do all the homework before the original test to qualify for the retake." What is currently in place is a self-paced learning and practice, where students can decide how much practice they need to master a topic, meaning homework is not graded. This leaves an opportunity for students to do minimal work throughout a unit, take a test, not do well, and then request a retake. Yes, the requirement for the retake is that all work is completed, but it seems that people are doing minimal work throughout the unit and then deciding to do the work after the test, banking on a retake. One student in this group said, "I think giving the chance to retake isn't preparing students for the future. If you are able to retake a test, you are at an advantage because you know generally what might be on the retake, and you get a longer amount of time to study for it." Another student described how they felt it wasn't mirroring what they would see in college, as retake opportunities aren't available to the same degree as students face in D-128. Another perspective is that self-paced learning lets students decide how much work they need to put in to understand the curriculum. These students said it makes sense that we can decide how much of the homework we need to do to prepare for a test. If we understand the material and the unit, then why do extra unnecessary work? A junior who agreed with this perspective said, "It gives students their own drive to understand the material, but allows for that to happen on their own schedule if need be." However, other students feel that having retakes in place gives students the ability to continue to understand what they missed and didn't understand. According to one senior, she said, "I think retakes should be allowed. I know that some people use them, but I really think it's not a black-and-white situation. Some people genuinely just want to try to work to get their grade higher, as well as better understand the material for AP curriculum." This issue seems to have many opinions and perspectives on why retake policy could improve with stricter requirements, but also the positives and improvements that retakes can provide to students. Debates will continue for their current retake policies as there will continue to be varying motives for retake. Thanks for letting me share a little bit longer, I appreciate it.
Last Tuesday, the National Honor Society welcomed new students into the chapter, as well as honored current seniors who have served on the executive board or reached 100 hours of community service. The ceremony was led by the NHS exec board members and included speeches from advisor Mrs. Kelly and Dr. K. The night went smoothly, and there was an impressive turnout from juniors compared to previous years. Inducted junior Natalie Schlitz shared, "I felt like my hard work was recognized and paid off. I thought it was great how the advisors made sure to pronounce everyone's name right, and I enjoyed that everybody had their small moment of applause to recognize this achievement." As current president of NHS, I look forward to seeing all of the ways these students make our school and community better next year. Over the past month, LHS has recognized seniors who have made an impact in our schools at the community scholarships and department awards. These students were recognized by community sponsors and staff for their excellence in academics, community involvement, and extracurriculars. Senior Rachel Rule said she found both ceremonies to run very efficiently and was glad she could, or she was glad students could be recognized, take photos, and celebrate before school without being late to class. She also enjoyed being able to sit with family and the sponsors or staff members that presented the award, as it gave students the opportunity to thank them in person and share how they would use the award in their future paths. Rachel was also thankful the awards were livestreamed, as students or family members that couldn't make it could still watch and celebrate. These events were great opportunities to recognize the high-achieving students at our school and honor their accomplishments inside and outside of the classroom.
This last Friday, you may have seen some new faces at VHHS with our annual Bring Your Child or Parent Work Day taking place. Staffs, kids were able to explore the school, do arts and crafts, and swim. Student leaders across the school helped facilitate this experience, supplementing our VH-Give sessions talking about community, urging the community to ask questions and get to know one another. The VH-Give team also produced a video with staff who shared details of their life, allowing everyone to get to know them better. Also this month, our US reps were given the opportunity to switch places, and I was able to go to LHS for a day. This experience really showed me how different our schools are. One notable aspect that differs is culture. While many LHS seniors go out to lunch, many VH students congregate in shared workspaces during free periods, like in the upper commons, the R, and in the foyer. I am thankful to be given this opportunity to go to LHS and see another student's D-128 perspective. Additionally, this past week, VH has dominated in the academic club domain. Our Science Olympia team went down to Urbana-Champaign last week and were able to secure a sixth-place finish overall. Notably, Olivia Graham and Madeline Wayne came first in their event, Write It, Do It, where students try to write a description of an object while another student attempts to build it. More so, the VH-Math team got a well-deserved fourth-place finish at state this year. A big congratulations to all competitors. VHHS JSA, Junior State of America, a club for activism and debate, had the special opportunity to hear from Daniel Didich. An exec board member of JSA, Ashva Ramish, shared his experience. "I recently helped plan an event by inviting our state rep, Daniel Didich, to come speak at our JSA meeting. Our club learned so much about the legislative process in Illinois, the process of running election campaigns, and also how and why we as youth should get involved in community service, government, and activism in our own community. Having the opportunity to directly ask someone so experienced in politics any question truly opened my eyes and inspired me to create a career path in public service and government. Opportunities like this encapsulate the Daring mission and give VHHS students the unique education beyond the classroom." More so, VHHS also engaged in suicide prevention education from April 22nd to April 24th, where underclassmen were taught about the resources they can use for mental health awareness. VHHS also celebrated their last Fun Friday in the month of April, where students could participate in fun activities in the West Gym. Senior Shrithi Rosario loved the experience, saying, "It was very fun going to the bouncy house and being able to build huge yoga box in the West Gym." This Fun Friday was part of the Daring Week organized by Amy Dillon and the Prevent- and the Prevention and Wellness staff. Its goal is to help students with their mental health. The week included opportunities for students to drive pedal carts and see eclipses during the seventh period as well. Additionally, a main event taking place in the VHS foyer was the Unity Fair, which might look...
Good evening. The Uni Fair was hosted this past week, and at the fair, we had all of our various cultural affinity groups and organizations set up booths in the foyer where they had various games, treats, and other activities that were reflective of that group's culture. In addition to that, this past week, our STEM genetics class participated in the BD STEM Challenge. This event has been something these students and staff have been working on since around October, November. The overall debate was covering whether or not CRISPR technology should be implemented on human embryos. There were six groups, three that were pro the technology and three that were against the use of this technology. In the end, the side that was pro CRISPR ended up winning the debate. Vernon Hills also held its very first Asian-American Pacific Islander Summit. When speaking with one of the attendees, they detailed their experience, which entailed hearing from a guest speaker, Dr. Ada Cheng, where she shared her experience as an immigrant and the life as an Asian American. In addition to that, the attendees were able to choose either to participate in groups, group games, or share with one another about their unique experiences as Asian Americans. During my conversation spent with one of the attendees, they expressed their desire to include or invite other people, more of which don't identify as Asian. In the end, they all really enjoyed the event, and there was a lot of student and staff participation that made the event successful.
This year, prom was hosted at the Renaissance Hotel where nearly 295 VHSHS seniors, 17 juniors, and 35 guests attended. The night was full of activities with there being checkers, photo booths, and plenty of dancing all night long. One participant commented on the fine dining and complimented the strawberry shortcake that was served. Additionally, the highlight for some was prom court with a huge congrats to Piyong Yun, Trudy, Nolan, Ariana, Ava, Sean, Laurel, and Charlie. The coming school day was then Senior Ditch Day, where seniors ditched school and got to enjoy the day off. With more, with just 20 more days of school left for seniors, the senior countdown has been set into motion. Today was Lights Out Day and students wore black. More importantly, the buzz around the school has been surrounding this Wednesday, where students will be bringing anything but a backpack. Fair warning on the microwaves. This month, another 12 Daring students were awarded Class Act awards. One in particular mentioned how it was a rewarding experience to be recognized. More specifically, he claimed it was an indication that he was on the right path in school, that he finally felt like all the little things he did didn't go unnoticed. Congratulations to Nate Rutgers, Nathan Solinsky, Iman Deila, Holly Fetsch, Miria Gomez, Rishma Kharecharla, Darina Kozicuk, Isaac Lee, Riley Levy, Marilyn Wright, Emily O'Chang, and Annabelle Opalihi. Lastly, anatomy students had the chance to attend a field trip this month to a Level 1 trauma care facility at Condell Hospital. There, students were invited to view and participate in live simulations, talk with everyone involved during trauma care, and visit the ambulance bay as well as a medevac. After discussing one attendee, discussing with one attendee, he noted that this field trip further supported his selective pre-men major as he engaged in a virtual robotic simulation on a mannequin. Overall, seniors are looking forward to the end of the school activities and are preparing for their AP tests that take place starting next week. Thanks.
Can I ask a question? And this has nothing to do with your delivery. It's the acoustics in here. It was so hard. I'm trying really hard to hear. I know you all prepare this on, um, in PDF. Do you mind emailing me a copy of what your statement was? I got most of it, but it, I think it's mostly acoustics.
Yeah, if you could use the school board account, that way it'll go to all of us in one email. Thank you.
I meant the whole board. I figured that was for everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the school board members? School board representatives? Okay, we will move on to the foyer request report.
The school board received, or the district received 14 foias since we last met, and I want to applaud Bryant Kelly, Carol Skodin, and Dan Stanley for their hard work in fulfilling all of those foias. And they are listed in the board packet.
Thank you. Moving on, good news.
We have a lot more good news to report, so I'll just dive right in. Last week, U.S. News &amp; World Report released its 2024 list of the best high schools. We are proud to share that Vernon Hills and Libertyville High Schools were ranked number eight and number 12 among the high schools in Illinois. However, the true comparison is to rank us with other non-selective community high schools. The high schools ranked numbers one through five, seven, and nine on the list are selective enrollment or magnet schools. Our ranking among our peer districts are number two and number five. Congratulations to the entire D-128 team that made this recognition possible, including our Daring students, amazing teachers and student services staff, dedicated ESP, heroic principals in both the Libertyville and Vernon Hills administrative teams, our district leadership and staff, the Board of Education, and our supportive community. Next, 15 Vernon Hills High School students were named April recipients of the Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award. Riley Levy, Shaw Smith, Rishma Kharecharla, Callie Steele, Holly Fetsch, Isaac Lee, Madeline Wright, Iman Deila, Mariah Gomez, Sophia Labelle, Darila Kocuk, and Nathan Rutgers. Next, for U.S. history, we had 10 students from Vernon Hills recently complete the state history fair in Springfield. Three projects were named state finalist. Caleb Gumner's paper, Marbury vs. Madison, qualified for the National History Day Fair. Other semi, other state finalists were Catherine Udis and Anya Gupta for Watergate scandal, and Reva Matura and Michelle Yutsis for Clara Barton's creation of the American Red Cross. Earlier tonight, we recognized the Libertyville Science Olympiad for its great state finishing. We would also like to recognize the Vernon Hills Science Olympiad team. 13 students placed in the top 10, and the team finished sixth overall in the state. The team is coached by Nikki Collins, Yan Choi, and Josh Ravenkrantz. Other good news includes that our Transition Pathway teacher, Alyssa Pector, has been named a Fund for Teachers 2023 Fellow. As a fellow cohort member, she will travel to the Netherlands this summer to learn inclusive strategies from Dutch education system and society. Next, senior Michael John from Libertyville placed second in the IHSA State Tournament held on April 24th at Evergreen Park. He competed in the game Super Smash Brothers Singles. This is the first time a Libertyville esports student has medaled at state. Founded in 2020, the Libertyville esports team is coached by science teacher Mark Busing. Next, to the arts, Libertyville students submitted 20 art pieces, 19 poems, and three prose pieces to the Illinois Association of English Poetry and Prose Contest. Karen LaMaster is a Libertyville facilitator of the Writing Awards Program. In addition to three honorable mentions in art, one honorable mention in prose, runner-up in art, three runners-up in poetry, works by the following students will be published in the Bulletin. Art, Shagun Ponia, Katie Schickler, Rashika Tepardi, and Angela Zhao. For poetry, Rashika Tepardi, and for prose, Rashika Tepardi. Next, we have heard from this group here presenting to us. Our relief and Ecos groups were active and were recognized with Rise Challenge Grants from the Illinois Environmental Association. Proper titles and participants, our project titles, excuse me, Native Landscaping at Libertyville High School, Rain Garden Raffle, Earth Day Invasive Species Removal, Butterfly Shoreline Garden Village Cul-de-sac Program. And again, several students were recognized for that. LHS hosted this year's North Suburban Art Show on April 18th. The following students won best-of-show honors. Abby Dawes, Angela Zhao, Lindsay Villar, Sam Powers, Liam Fool, Cole Herzakas, Leanne Ulrich, Cole Mangura, Lauren Ryan, and Leah Chang. And finally, this month, the Bridgeport Art Center in Chicago hosted the Northern Regional Art Exhibition, a state-level competition for student artists exhibiting the best of the best in student artwork. Students representing D-128 for LHS were Leah Chang, Lauren Podlegar, Sammy Powers, Rashika Tepardi, Abigail Flanagan, and Ava Coot. For Vernon Hills, students included Joy Ning, Veronica Dmitriev, Sunny Catalin, Orlando Alas Sandoval, Callie Bennett, and Layella Rami. Thank you to everyone for all of this good news.
Thank you. I think we are going to ask for a motion for a five-minute recess to address some of the acoustic issues and see if it's possible to perhaps turn the volume of the speakers in the gym down while still maintaining the ability for people in the room to hear us and the audio recording. So if I could please have a motion for a five-minute recess?
All right, Michael. So moved.
Thank you.
Benjamin Second, please.
Thank you. We can do a voice vote for recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, give us just a few minutes. Great. We are moving on to our consent vote agenda. We are looking for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda is listed.
Carmichael, so moved.
Batson Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Kotwal.
Aye.
Holcarney.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. The consent vote agenda is approved. Moving on to items for action, I will turn it over to Chairperson Carmichael.
Okay. Our first item is a request for staffing to expand the support for students. And I think I'm turning this over to Brian and the Teaching and Learning Team.
All right. As all we all share, the goal of supporting our students as we provide an outstanding education. And I want to thank our team for their hard work and insights on the significant support that will be in place for our students as we start next year. Specifically tonight, we will explain the support models for our ninth-grade striving learner students and review our enhanced tutoring through MASH and ARC, which is drop-in support, and then high-impact tutoring being added for our other diagonal movers. We will also review supports being put in place and considered for staff, including considering systemic school improvement time for all built into our school calendar, targeting time for high-impact course teams to meet and work through the changes that they are facing. And these supports all support our daring mission. We want to graduate prepared and resilient students. We want strong skills for all of our students and know those skills are needed for their college or their military career or any career that they go into. And resiliency, our students learn to be resilient by persevering. As a parent, my son and daughter were diagonal movers. Not with all their courses, but what I wanted for them, we want for all of our kids. We want our students to hit the challenges of diagonal movement with the support of our caring schools and our homes. And our work this year has proactively prepared for our freshman striving learners to be integrated with our college prep classes as we implement the Accelerated Placement Act that aligns with our goals to increase access to rigorous curriculum. We have a tradition of students challenging themselves by diagonally moving, and they have done well at Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. The Accelerated Placement Act has also increased our 10th through 12th grade graders who are challenging themselves. And the plans we will discuss tonight enhance the design that is currently in place and the diagonal movers we are currently serving and the increase that we're going to see. And to get us started, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gilliam.
Thank you, Dr. Wegley. As you said, one of our main goals tonight is to communicate the ways that we will support our varied learners. As with all of the sore plans discussed this evening, you'll hear us talk about a multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS, and that's broken down into three tiers of support. Core instruction for all students. Targeted intervention for a smaller subset of students and even smaller set of students who receive intense intervention support. It's been noted and we understand that D-128 is in the process of building and refining its full MTSS system. Yet many of these supports on an instructional level have been in place and/or are being developed for next year. To begin with, all students, all grades, whether in college prep, honors, dual credit, advanced placement, receive high-quality Tier One instruction. This primarily comes in the form of teachers' work in the classroom. As been said, we have outstanding teachers who have always worked with students at varying levels and for years have increased their capacity to handle this practice through professional learning opportunities. Teachers will also receive ongoing feedback through progress monitoring of grades and math and reading feedback through a digital assessment program called STAR. Additionally, teachers will continue to make themselves available for one-on-one or small group help on their non-scheduled times. Similar Tier One drop-in tutoring is available in the ARC and MASH for students who can't find times to meet with a specific teacher. As a system, we've adopted instructional practices like retakes, redos, as a means to support all students at a Tier One level. This next slide will look at our two-tier support, our Tier Two supports for grade-nine striving learners. For the most part, we're talking about ninth graders who will be, who have been in team-taught, in a team-taught course, but are now placed into college prep biology, Algebra I, and freshman lit and comp. This, again, is the place where there was some concern that we were doing away with honors courses, and that is not true. Our desire here is to push all capable learners into college prep classes and support those who need it with specific intervention. Using data sets that include PSAT scores, STAR screener achievement progress, grade progress and teacher input, some students will need interventions like PAWS, short for Programs Assisting with Success, in our newly board-adopted instructional labs. Let's dive a bit deeper into PAWS. Using PSAT scores from all eighth graders and articulation information from feeder schools, a subset of students were placed into PAWS as one of their assigned eight periods within the school day. The program has three primary support functions, and students may be assigned to get support in just one or two or even all three areas. Ninth graders needed support in areas like study skills, organization, time management, and the like, work on executive functioning skills. Others who need focused skill development and literacy and numeracy work with certified reading and math teachers to close skills gap in these areas. Teachers will use STAR reading and math as an intervention prescription, as an intervention monitor, and as an intervention exit tool. The goal of the program is to graduate these students out of the program after one year, though we do have some students at both schools who re-enter the PAWS program for a sophomore year. Other ninth-grade students in biology, Algebra I, and freshman lit and comp need something a little less intensive than a full period every day for an entire year and may be placed into the newly-adopted instructional labs. Labs will take place during a student's lunch study hall. Their focus will be course-specific and support the day-to-day classroom curriculum being taught in those courses. Students decided the intervention will typically have a grade below C and need high-dose tutoring and specific content skills and course standards. Students who show improvement in their grade progress or core content comprehension will be able to exit the program after short intervals of time. It would be normal to see a student exit a lab after two weeks of instruction and never need to visit the lab again. It may also be that a student gets placed in the lab at varied times throughout the semester with several weeks between the intervention visits. A lab will be coordinated and planned by D-128 certified teachers and will use trained instructional aides as the day-to-day tutors. This graphic depicts the ninth-grade support I just explained again. MASH and ARC drop-in tutoring gets a student help with things like homework problems, test prep, essay feedback from a varied group of teachers, aides, and peer tutors. Moving up the scale, instructional labs are during a ninth-grader's lunch study hall and give students supports and course standards and skills from teachers and aides. And then the most intensive Tier Two intervention in this model is a full-period PAWS where students receive important skill development from teachers in executive functioning, numeracy, and literacy. This table shows the commitment of the district, shows the commitment the district is placing in these ninth-grade interventions. With the elimination of team-taught courses in this area, the district could have saved 3.2 full-time teacher equivalents. Yet, through the build-out and relocation of staff into the PAWS and lab model, the district is adding 1.4 teachers and adding 4.0 educational support personnel in the form of instructional aides. And that's not the only place where we will add staff for Tier One and Tier Two interventions. Tonight, we'll be proposing adding additional staff for student-level changes, enhancements in our tutoring centers, the MASH at LHS and the ARC at Vernon Hills. And Tom will walk us through the new structure for high-impact tutoring. Since we first presented our outlines of the plan a couple of weeks ago, we have been at work gathering feedback from various stakeholders within the schools. You'll see from this list that we took input from union members on the Labor Management Committees, teachers, ESP, administrators on teams like the District MTSS Planning Team, Curricular Development Teams, EOS Access Teams, and our Building Leadership Teams. We want to thank all of those who provided thoughtful input and critique as we built out these plans. After hearing from our board and others over the last couple of weeks, one area we wanted to be sure to address is the availability of seats in classes in some of our diagonal mover, if some of our diagonal movers need to level down after trying some of these diagonal more rigorous courses. Please understand, our first priority will be to see that each student receives the support necessary to be successful when diagonally moving. Remember, each student placed into a diagonally-moved course did so because they met a certain criteria. Our goal is success for those students. However, we recognize that after the best efforts of students and staff, there will be some who need the pressure release of a level down from an honors AP to a college prep. Though our initial sectioning process, we did a good job of making space available in most college prep catch courses. After further review, we've identified five courses, three at Vernon Hills and two at Libertyville, that would benefit from an additional section that would essentially provide 25 seats each for students who may need to level down. Our recommendation tonight is for the board to approve the additional five-year-long sections that would be above and beyond the staffing contingency funds that were built into the initial staffing model. And now, Dr. Kay will take us deeper into the supports for diagonal movers.
Yes, good evening. And we are going to discuss our second area of focus, which is the support we have and are proposing for our diagonal-moving students. And as a reminder, just real quick, a diagonal mover is a student who has selected to enroll in a higher-level course next year than they are in this year. And one thing that I just want to make clear, because I think it's very easy for people to get confused, even though the APA would mean that we have to place a student in the next highest-level course. If that student has demonstrated they're at standard or exceeding standards, they are placed in the next highest-level course. They don't have to stay there. So we are not forcing students who are unprepared to take higher-level courses. What we are doing is we are placing them in that course, and then through education about what these courses are and their total course plan, students are able to step back to a lower-level course to create balance in their life. Prior to the APA law, kids might have been put into the college prep and had to sort of advocate to move up. What APA does is it tells students, we are going to automatically place you in the high-level course, but you and your family can absolutely move down. So a diagonal mover is not a child who is being forced to do something they're not ready for and don't want to do. A diagonal mover is a child who has demonstrated academic skills, has demonstrated the motivation to do well in school, has developed an academic identity that is forming, and is selecting to take a higher-level course the following year in order to continue to expand and grow their skills. As you'll see in a moment, each year, District 128 has a lot of diagonal movers. This is something we have long encouraged our students to do because we want students to continue to grow and develop their skills. My colleague Charlotte is going to share some data in a minute about how the new APA law has impacted the number of students making diagonal moves in District 128 next year. But before we covered that, we just wanted to review very quickly again the concept of diagonal mover and clarify what type of student that is. So at this point, we'll go to some of the data.
Thank you.
Sorry, Charlotte.
Thank you. As we saw in the data provided in the presentation on April 15th, and as we've said numerous times, diagonal movement is not new to D-128. But we did know that we would have more of it going into the 2024-25 school year due to the Accelerated Placement Act. So next year, we will have an additional 145 students moving from college prep to AP and an additional 62 students moving from college prep to honors than we had this current school year. Again, this was something we fully expected with the implementation of the Accelerated Placement Act. Other types of diagonal movement are consistent with what we have seen over the past several years. And we also know that we have a history of doing diagonal movement well in D-128. We've analyzed grade data and seen that the majority of students making diagonal moves are successful in their higher-level courses. One question we received previously is how many of our diagonal movers will be taking their first-ever honors or AP course next school year? At the April 15th meeting, we reported that there would be 255 students who will be in their first-ever honors or AP course in 2024-25. At that time, we did not have data from previous years, but we do have this data now, which is what you are seeing in the graphs on the screen. We can see here the trend over the past four years, including the rising grade levels of the students who are taking their first honors or AP course. Grade levels are shown on the slide in different colors. So if you follow the colors on each of those bar graphs, you can see that it is our rising 10th graders who are typically the largest group taking their first honors or AP course, and that remains true in 2024-25. The graph on the previous slide showed that there are 255 students in the combined rising 10th, 11th, and 12th grade classes who will be taking their first honors or AP course. This is an increase of 36 rising 10th graders, but it's a decrease in rising 11th and 12th graders for a net increase of 17 students taking their first-ever honors or AP course in 2024-25. This image summarizes the data that we've looked at on the past three slides. For the 2024-2025 school year, we have 235 more diagonal movers than we had in 2023-2024. 217 of those are diagonal movers going specifically from college prep to honors or AP. Again, that's 217 more in 2024-25 than we had in 2023-24. That 217 number comes from the numbers we've already reviewed, 145 students moving from college prep to AP and 62 college prep to honors diagonal movers. And lastly, we have 17 more diagonal movers who are entering honors or AP courses for the first time. This is not at all meant to minimize the idea that support is needed for these students. We believe the efforts we are making are right-sizing our support systems for all students in our schools. But this also puts in mind a scale of what new supports are needed. And I am now turning it back over to Tom.
Yes, so I want to talk about the, not only supporting our diagonal movers, but also, we've heard very clearly from the board in our community, our need to support all of our students. And we believe the plan tonight is designed to do both. So when we look at our MASH and ARC, one of the things that John was talking about for our freshmen was the MASH and the ARC being the place where students would get drop-in support. We have recognized, however, that the MASH and the ARC have historically been dependent upon teacher duties. And we at Libertyville and at Vernon Hills do not have enough teachers in our duty pool to cover all of the spots in the MASH and the ARC, nor to make sure that if a large number of students needed drop-in support, that one teacher could meet with and manage all of the questions they are getting. So one of our commitments through our plan is to enhance the support in the MASH and the ARC, to build that staffing up so that not just our diagonal movers, but other students who might be in honors or AP classes and be very much in comfort in those levels would still be able to go to the MASH and the ARC to get support. We believe we can get more support and cover a significant amount of student needs through using our teachers and instructional aides, through continuing our peer tutoring program that is well-established at Vernon Hills and further developing it at Libertyville. And we are designing executive functioning supports to be offered through the MASH and ARC as well. And then because not all students are the same, we do know that there are some students who would benefit from quick online tutoring and support. That may not be appropriate for all students, but we want to have that as a tool that we can offer for students who do respond well to that and may just have one or two quick questions where if a teacher is working with a group of students, they could quickly log on, get their questions answered so that they could continue on with their homework or get the feedback they needed to be successful for their project. That would be our Tier One support because that is universal. It is available to all students. And through the enhanced staffing that we're proposing tonight, we would be able to feel tremendously confident that students going to the MASH and ARC would receive support that they are seeking. We do, however, consider that we need some new Tier Two supports for our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And so, one of the things that we have been working on these last couple of weeks is building a lab model similar to the model that we created for our freshmen. In this situation, sophomores, juniors, and seniors needing help in math, in science, and English would be able to be assigned to the MASH or the ARC to receive high-impact tutoring from a certified staff teacher. So this would model, in many ways, the supports that we're putting in place for our freshmen. This would be for students who are in classes, struggling with Ds or Fs, having teacher recommendations to say, this student needs some extended support more than just getting a few homework questions answered. They are struggling to show proficiency on our core targets or our core skills. They would be assigned there through our lab coordinators and our department chairs, and they would be connected to teachers who would have duties, or, excuse me, assignments specific to supporting these students. Yeah, sorry, I'm advancing on the computer, but not on the screen. My apologies, especially to our at-home audience. Okay, so let's take a look. This mirrors our freshman supports, but it's important to notice there are some differences. So we look at intensity of support for our Y-axis and frequency and duration of support for our X-axis. MASH and ARC for upperclassmen would have the lowest duration of support and the lowest intensity. That is for kids who need drop-in support on homework help. I just have a question on pre-calculus. I don't know how to figure this out. I'm going to go to the MASH and I'm going to have a teacher or an instructional assistant there who's going to help me solve that problem, get me what I need so that I can go about and continue my studies and continue my homework. That should serve the majority of our students. When students demonstrate significant trouble meeting skill proficiency targets, that's where they can be assigned to a lab. Our model for our upperclassmen is that the lab support would be offered before school. That is when we know the majority of our students are available and we would have certified teachers in our labs ready to tutor students at that time in this model. That does present some challenges for students who ride the bus. So that is an issue that we are going to talk about in a few moments. But in general, the program that we're designing is one that we can scale up. So we targeted, starting with before-school tutoring. If we see an increased need for the tutoring, then we can scale to other times during the day, which we'll discuss in a moment. For our upperclassmen, as John referenced, we will continue to offer a pause program for students who need that additional support beyond their freshman year. Largely pause for upperclassmen focuses on continuing to support students with their executive function development. So, yep, thank you, I got to get that reminder. So this is our current MASH and ARC model that we have, as staffing allows. You see that we are currently staffing our MASH and our ARC through our duties. And you see, because the size of our schools, staffs are different, that is why we have different staff members available. So LHS has a smaller staff than, or, excuse me, Vernon Hills has a smaller staff than Libertyville. They have less teachers available in their duty pool. So you see that Vernon Hills has 15 teachers available to theoretically support their ARC. We have 22 teachers available through our duty pool. That creates 37 duty assignments that we assign, that we can assign, with no additional cost to the district. Both of our MASH and our ARC are staffed by ESPs, and that is something that would continue. So right now, our MASH and ARC cost us our teacher duties plus two ESPs for approximately $100,000. One of the discussions at our previous meeting was to fully staff the MASH with FTE for certified teachers. And while that is certainly something that the board may ask us to do, and we would do that, our district administration is not recommending that model. That creates some inequitable assignments for teachers, some being assigned as duty, some having it assigned as a stipend, some having it assigned as FTE. And so, even though teachers in our building have different salaries for doing similar work because of many factors that affect that, this would be teachers doing different duties and having different compensation for that. And that's something that administratively, we are not recommending. So we did create a plan that we are recommending to start with, but we have an alternative plan as well that we want to talk you through. The plan that we are recommending is what we're calling Enhanced Support for the MASH and the ARC with duties and ESP covering the MASH and the ARC, and then duty stipends for high-dose tutoring that would be paid to certified staff. So if you look at this model, the orange represents the Tier One. So that is the MASH and ARC support for all students. And we are recommending that we would be adding an additional .6 of ESP support for science, math, and English at Vernon Hills and .6 in science and math at Libertyville. Libertyville has enough English teachers in our duty pool where we don't think we necessarily need the additional aid or ESP support to fill out our MASH. What this would show, then, is that the ESP for the MASH and the ARC would increase at Vernon Hills to 2.8 and for Libertyville, 2.2. So that would make a total of five ESP for Vernon Hills and Libertyville combined. That includes the two existing ESP. We then are adding, we have our 37 duties that we've already talked about. What we then would do for our Tier Two is we would offer stipends that would be offered to certified teachers in the various departments, starting with science, math, and English. And those stipends would be assigned to teachers who are volunteering to work as tutors for individual or small groups of students before school. As I discussed, similar to the freshmen, those teachers would be having students assigned to them who would come in on a schedule before school for targeted skill and course content work with the goal being that the student reaches skill proficiency. This intervention would end when a student is demonstrating skill proficiency, but could be reassigned if a student continues to struggle later on in the quarter or the semester. When we add this new ESP FTE together with the duty stipends, we are increasing the amount of resources dedicated to our MASH and ARC and to tutoring by the total of $353,200. I'm going to move us forward to an alternative model. You, as a board, asked us to consider some Plan Bs and alternatives. This is a targeted model that builds out the MASH and the ARC. So everything in orange is the same as the first model that we showed you. What is different here is we are bolstering the Tier Two by adding more stipends at Vernon Hills and Libertyville to pay teachers to tutor during lunch periods as well as before school. So one of the problems before school is that students who take the bus may not be able to come into school early to benefit from some of the tutoring that we would like to make available. Putting the tutoring during lunch periods allows us to have tutoring available for students during their lunch periods when we know that all students have a free period during periods three, four, five, or six. So increasing the amount of stipends takes us from six stipends at each school to 18 at each school for a total of 36 stipends. That increases the cost of this model to approximately $612,400. Okay, so I know this is complex, that I'm kind of showing different models here. Thank you, John. So I'm going to move to kind of a side-by-side demonstration. Remember, in each model we're proposing, the Tier One resources are increased and kept the same. It is the Tier Two that is different in our models. One model offers six stipends before school, the other 18 stipends for before school and during lunch. Now, with the amount of stipends allocated before school, as I said, we would be able to scale our model. If we started with the before school and found that we had students who needed the tutoring and were unable to take advantage of it, we would be able to scale to other times during the day. If we started during the lunch periods, we would, of course, be working to build that out. But at this point, we cannot give you, like we can, other classes. Like, we can tell you exactly how many students are going to be in pause based on our course recommendation process. We cannot tell you at this point how many students are going to need tutoring at this level. We have not had this program before for students. And so, we are starting with the conservative estimate that we would have six certified teachers, two in our key subject areas. The reason we're going with English, math, and science is what we see in our MASH is those are the subjects that students most often seek assistance for. So students do struggle at times with social studies or world languages, but they seldom are coming to the MASH or the ARC to get support intensively in those subject areas. So in a conservative way, we're starting with science, math, and English, which our data would tell us are the subjects most in demand for support, and starting with a before-school-focused model that we believe could be expanded and built out if we are seeing student need in other subject areas or at other times during the day. Moving forward, what we'd like to highlight here is a summary of Proposal One. The Certified Staff FTE is an increase as a one, or, excuse me. What you see, this combines the increased FTE at a 1.0 that would be for giving students who need to move down more space to move down and make a level change. This shows the increase of five ESP FTE as well as the 2.0 increase in high-impact tutoring. We also show the 12 extra duty stipends that we would be adding. The $353,000 to build out the MASH and the tutoring, along with $100,000 for the increased FTE, creates a total of $453,200 for this model. So nearly a half-million-dollar increase in resources in Model One. Model Two, shown here, again, whoops, sorry. There we go. All right, we've got a lot of screens here. Model Two shows the increase, again, the 1.0 in the Level Change FTE, the 5.0 in ESP FTE, and the 2.0 for High-Impact Tutoring, and the combined Vernon Hills/Libertyville total of 36 extra-duty stipends. When you combine those items together, that would be $612,400 for the MASH and the ARC and tutoring, plus $100,000 in the Course Level Change FTE for a grand total of $712,400. So almost $750,000 in new resources being added to support students in that model. Kind of moving us away, one of the things we have heard and are committed to doing is helping our students and our families is helping our students and our families understand how support will be in place for them next year. We have begun to design a series of visual information that we would be communicating to families and students and staff next year. Here, what you can see is how we are picturing our support process to work. Students begin their journey in August at the beginning of this road, and we would be making them aware that they have in-class support and out-of-class support. Obviously, the first level of support is always to encourage our students to work directly with their classroom teacher when they encounter that first bump in the road. If they do that and they still need additional help outside of class, they would go to the MASH and the ARC as our Tier One support, where they would get their initial questions answered. We would also be encouraging students who need support to join peer study groups and get peer assistance. Students who also need support would be encouraged to take online or take advantage of the online tutoring resources that we are investing in and developing. And then if students continued to struggle, we would begin to intervene with a Tier Two model of assigning students to tutoring labs. And for students that demonstrate to us significant skill gaps in numeracy and literacy, we would be assigning them pause where they would get intensive skill development support on a daily basis from certified teachers. So this is sort of another way of showing our intervention pyramid in a more kind of visual way of a student's journey through these supports.
Great, and I think I get to take over from here. I have the pleasure of explaining to the board three of the strands that we are planning to try and provide more support to our staff. When we had conversations for a long time, and actually even the union statement tonight talked about the need for more consistent, more systemic time for teachers to learn and work together. That luncheon learns and professional learning sessions on two institute days is not enough support for them to do the work, the high-quality work that they want to do for our students. So the three areas that we are exploring, the one considering a late-start school improvement time, this would need to be in collaboration with our D128 Teachers Union, and we have begun the process of exchanging ideas on that and trying to find something that we both feel would be good for teachers, good for students, and good for our community. The second area is for the course teams that have a significant number of diagonal movers in them. And then the third is extending the runway. Next slide. So one of the things that we did is we looked to models that other schools who are implementing system-wide change turn to when they need more time. And one of the things that ISBE allows for is school improvement time. We have an additional amount of time each day that we can bank. And when we looked at that, we currently use some of our banked time to allow us to have flexible schedules during final exams. This, the amount that we would be asking for here would be above and beyond that. So the banked time would not jeopardize our final exam schedule. The school improvement days, you must be in session for 300 minutes, and that would allow up to 200 minutes per day for teacher collaboration time. This does meet the ROE minutes. We would be looking to work with our instructional coaches, our equity coaches, and our data coaches to take some of the very high-quality luncheon learns that they developed, that not everyone has access to, as well as additional needs. We talked about using our STAR math and reading. Right now, we would want to make sure that some of these learnings were for every teacher, every ESP, every school counselor, to make sure they know how to interpret the STAR reading scores, so they could use that to differentiate among students. Next slide. The second is talking about targeted support for those classes, and we have them listed up here. Obviously, the Algebra I Biology and English nine teams have been working collaboratively this school year to work on curriculum. We know that additional time would be greatly valued as they're implementing the curriculum. So a priority has been placed to try and schedule common planning time for those teacher teams. Another priority would be common planning time for other courses that are highly impacted. We've had significant increase in AP Psych here at Vernon Hills because that's the first time it's been offered to sophomores. We also see a larger-than-expected increase in World Lit Honors. So it's courses like those that we would also place a priority on scheduling common planning time. And then finally, one of the suggestions we received from the union was to offer, and this is also done at some other high schools in the area, maybe not common planning time, but chunks of time where they could work with their course teams to, again, work on differentiating upcoming units, look at student data, see how they could use their internal expertise to continue to refine the work they're delivering to students. And finally, extending runways. As we talked about last meeting, we are very open to adjusting timelines on some of our other initiatives to allow us to focus on this very key work that we're doing to expand access to all students. Some examples would be the curriculum guide alignment. I know one parent's comment tonight was noting that there are still differences between Vernon Hills and Libertyville curriculum. We are not going to force that to be fixed in one or two years. We know those differences exist, but we are going to take our time and gather input for those things to be modified and adjusted in a collaborative way. Another example is for our grading guidelines. We've had a team of teachers and administrators work in collaboratively for the last two years to map out implementation of our grading guidelines. And again, one parent tonight commented on the need for consistent grading for any MTSS team to work. So we are going to be receiving information and recommendations from the grading and assessment committee that they feel honor both of these, the need for consistent grading, but also some flexibility for teams who will be implementing and having relief where we can give relief and consistency where consistency is needed. Next slide. And then finally, nurturing a positive climate. The theme for next year for students and for staff will be to nurture student connection and belonging. Hearing the results of the survey that the union gave recently, hearing it first here at the, at the board seat, I am not satisfied with the results of that. I would want those results to be very high. I accepted this position knowing that we were going to be facing some significant challenges, but my commitment has and always will be to partner with our teachers and our union and our ESP on what we do have as common ground, and that is our expectation that all students can learn at high levels. I also want to comment on one of the things that a parent made about Yigatawana. And I think they were talking about maybe an assumption that not all of the students who are going to be in our honors or AP classes have the drive or motivation to be there. And I want to challenge that. I think that, having said that, at the last meeting, myself as a low-income learner, student, I wanted to be just as successful as my well-resourced friends. The students that we're talking about have tremendous passion to try and be prepared for post-secondary pursuits. I also think that Yigatawana applies to our teachers. When I talk with our teachers one-on-one, to a point, they are committed to making sure each and every student is successful. I believe that with every cell in my body. The last thing that I'd like to comment on about the need for nurturing a positive climate is the things that I am trying to do. For example, last Friday morning, we had a superintendent's roundtable, and I go and I hear feedback and try to answer questions from staff members about issues such as what's at the board today. At last Friday's meeting, the person who spoke for the board, Nikki Osersky, who's a wonderful teacher, gave the perspective that she shared about not feeling like the teachers had been listened to on the math intervention model. I took that in, I listened thoughtfully, and I gave a very deliberate response. We received two different plans from the District 128 math teachers. One was from the Libertyville team who worked separately from the Vernon Hills team. That was unfortunate, that was never by design. When we received two different plans, we went forward with the one that we had been modeling for two years. So while I respect Nikki's example, I think that it's really important to know that sometimes when we're trying to build trusting relationships and we're trying to implement what half of the math teachers in this district have been working for two years to implement that, then we move that forward as the model for the district. It is not in any way to try and disrespect the ideas of the Libertyville Math Department. We were trying to invest in 50% of our teachers who were already doing the work. I know that that doesn't come across always at this dais, but it's really important for me to express my commitment to listening to teacher voice and to using that to inform any recommendation that we bring here to the board. That will continue to be my commitment. It is one thing to lead change when you're trying to do an innovation, such as when we did a late start. We got to come up with that idea. We got to set our own timeline. We got to set our own parameters. We got to work with our community. We got to decide when we were going to implement it. That is a utopian way to get to bring about improvement in a school district. What we're faced with is implementing requirements and, and things that we are compelled to do by the state. That is a much more difficult change process to initiate. And you have my commitment to continue to be the voice for students and parents who aren't here tonight. One parent asked, why aren't there other parents here? We have been receiving voicemails and emails from parents. They are not comfortable speaking in this audience. They are writing to us instead of speaking to us because of some of the comments and some of the anger by which people are expressing themselves at this board table. And so I again want to reiterate my commitment to be a leader of equity in this district, to be a partner with the teachers, and to implement the plan that we've presented to you with fidelity. I now turn it over to the board for any questions for our plan.
Anyone? I mean, anybody that's ready, you can jump in, because once we start, it's going to go.
Sure, I can start. First, I do want to thank everybody for putting this plan together. I bet it was a lot of work and long hours and blood, sweat, and tears, so thank you for that. There is one, I have several questions, and it's 10 o'clock, so I'm not going to go through all of them. I'm going to talk about what I think are showstoppers. The first thing that I think I brought up also in the April 15 meeting is I still receive comments from parents that their students are enrolled in an advanced class, but they don't really understand what it, what that class is going to expect of them. How, you know, are they going to cover one chapter in a day, in a week, in a month? How many tests are you going to have? Things that you'd normally cover, let's say, at curriculum night. If that information was made available to these students like now, then they understand what supports are going to be in place. Then they can make an executive decision of, do we still want to stay there, or do we not want to stay there, and we need to allow them to make a change. Right now, I also see that we're only allowing students to go into a college-level class. What if there is an AP student who wants to go into honors? Because there are kids where AP is too hard and college level is too easy, and now we've taken that option away from them. So I would like to understand what steps are we going to take to make sure that we've got about, what, 255 students who are taking AP for the, AP or honors for the first time? I did the math from previous slides, about 146 of them are signed up for more than one advanced class. And none of that even includes incoming ninth graders. So what are we going to do to make sure that each of those students understands the expectations of the class? And then are we giving them, and we need to give them an option to get to a more comfortable level if that family wants to do that? That's my first question.
I invite my colleagues to answer that as well. I can tell you, having received that question several times, I'm very thankful that those of you that are getting that question are referring these folks to guidance counselors, because we have a system to provide information. Having talked to our assistant principals in, in Student Services, these folks work their tails off to get this information out. And I think did a, from what I am seeing that they have shared with me that went out on these registration process, they shared videos, all kinds of resources to help that information be available to folks. So my expectation is most have this. I get that no communication is going to reach all. And I know that Andy and Ollie have both said, when they finish the registration process, they send that out to our families so they get that information. A lot of the, the challenges that are out there, again, have been shared, I think, from what they have said, more so than any year previous to this year. And I would, I believe that, that they have done that. I think if there are questions that remain, please send people to our guidance counselors. Again, they will send information out. From there, it rolls things into a change process. And the idea that a student can't change from an AP to honors, that, first of all, there are very, very few of those transitions that occur in our curriculum. But if a student needs to make a change in any course, there is a process in place to do that. That is a change process that, again, tries to get our students the support they need, and that is what's being built out here tonight. And then if that support does not work, then a scheduled change is, is something that can be considered. But the first step will be what kind of support we have. So I'm thankful that, that again, we are, the questions that are there are being referred to guidance counselors.
Dr. Wigley, can I follow up on that, though?
Yep.
So what is it that, clearly, there's a disconnect, and it's not making it universally, right?
Yep.
And sometimes I think we have learned throughout this whole process that we are sharing so much information that it's getting lost in the weeds. The important stuff is getting lost in the weeds. And that's on us, because we're implementing this.
Sure.
So it is our responsibility to make sure that we are educating parents, students, and we're having these meaningful dialogues with our counselors. So there is a disconnect. We've heard it from more, it doesn't matter which school it is. And I, and I've seen some of the emails of click here, go to this tab, there's a link here. Is, is there not a simpler mechanism that we can create? I mean, I think personally, we're talking about, we, we are concerned about at minimum 255 students who are challenging themselves and may not, may not know what those levels look like. And that's unilaterally those first honor AP students. At a very minimum, there's 145 that have chosen to take multiple of these. And start this as the pilot, this is our Band-Aid. And Dr. Giam, I, I remember what you said yesterday. The law is requiring, or not yesterday, last meeting, the law is requiring us to register these, place these students in this. But yet we're sending out documents that say, this is your recommendation. So our language isn't even consistent. And at minimum, start with these 145 students as a pilot or a Band-Aid. And at minimum, start with these 145 students as a pilot or a Band-Aid, and have these com, just double check and say, are you aware that this? I don't want to discourage anybody from challenging if they really want to challenge. I want to confirm that they are making a valid choice. And something that is at least, is that possible? Do you see that as a problem, and that possibly being a solution at this moment?
I think I'd have to work with Andy and Ollie on that. And I took it to our principals to answer that as well. I think, again, the, I think there's two tiers of this. One is communication will continue to improve as we get smarter next year. I think a lot of good information's out there. Can we organize it? We are adding to our plans to make sure, as we move forward, continuing to organize that information in as understandable a way as we can on our websites, and this is looking forward. You're asking about what can we do right now for kids? Number one is, if there's a question out there, please let us know, but in terms of the request to reach out.
Yeah, a couple of things. One thing that you said, and I hesitate, as we have these meetings, to get into this, well, we did this, but you're not, but one thing that you said resonated, and that is we did push out a lot of information. And to the extent that it was information overload, as a system, we feel like, when addressing those questions about, were we arming our students and our families with information about the types of classes, the rigor in those classes? Now, we didn't have a curriculum night where we laid out every unit, and that practically can't happen in a high school this big with all of the different courses, for a kid to step into each one of the courses that he or she is going to plan to take and sit through that kind of. But we provided information to students in live format with department, with class meetings, and also in their core classes with teachers visiting from the level up course, the next year course. Is there some disconnect? Might some families, some students feel like they didn't have enough information? Perhaps that's true, and we'll go back to the drawing boards to make sure that what we're doing is appropriate. The other thing is, can we reach out to families to see if they need clarification, if they have questions? We certainly have been doing that through these board meetings. Perhaps there are families not tuned into this that would benefit from such a thing. But just your statement right there, you're hearing from families who are saying they don't understand, or they're not sure. We're making the statement in these meetings, please come to us, call. We're not getting those calls. So if they're saying it to you, it's stopping there, and they're not taking the next step to say, hey, let me talk to a counselor, let me talk to a department chair, who are waiting for them to call, to say, okay, let's talk about your kid, let's talk about those scores, this is in past years where those scores would have ranked, where we, we're not getting those calls. And I'm not discounting what you're saying, but we're trying to be responsive to the perceived need and the practical need that we're getting from a system standpoint. That's phone calls, emails, and they're just not coming right now. And so I would encourage anyone, incoming freshman through incoming rising senior, if you have questions such as, what does this class entail? Am I in over my skis? Is my kid going to have a hard time? Am I going to have a hard time as a student? This is what my learner identity is. Help me understand better. Maybe, you know, I missed it the first time through. Help me understand better. We're there, ready to do it.
But I think that's being reactive, and what I'm asking is, should we be proactive, at least at this point, for the minimum of those students that we can identify have challenged themselves with even more than one AP or honors course? I mean, that, I know we can get better at communicating this and creating our mechanisms in the future, but it seems like if we move forward, we have at least 145 students that might not know, and you're asking, I just see this being as, instead of reactive being...
Yep, I mean, here's another thought. I mean, if you, you know by now which are the classes that have the most students from an advanced class standpoint.
Yep.
You already know what those classes entail. How many tests do they have? What's your average grade in a class? There is information that is available. Can you make that available? Have a series of webinars. It's not a webinar, but have like a town hall type thing where you can spotlight a certain, it's, you know, Math Wednesday, and you can have your math department heads at that WebEx or Zoom call and let people ask questions. You may have one person who shows up, maybe no one shows up, but it shows that we've put in the effort. And if they don't come, then at that point, we can't, they lose complaining rights. But we take this, and then we say between, I'm going to pick a date here, June 1st and June 15, you have an opportunity to change your class. After that, it's done. Then you have to be in school, you have to try it out, and then that process follows.
That makes sense, and we can talk about ways of reaching out to families. And this is, again, I hesitate to be in this tit for tat, but I'm looking at a document called Course, Department Course Level Descriptions and Resources, and it is exactly what you're talking about. It's that, it's that communication from a system to a student and/or a family to say, okay, when you jump into the math department and you look at the 10th grade options, here is informal geometry versus geometry versus geometry. Like, that document exists in that resource. Can we do a proactive reach out to families? I think we can do that, and we can work towards what that might look like.
Can I just ask this question, and just to put it sort of into perspective from my mind? And again, not to diminish anyone that has a concern about where their child is placed, what courses they might be taking, but this is not the first time we've had people taking honors or AP courses for the first time. We typically, according to this data, and I just want to clarify, 223 in 22, 226. So each year, we have 200 and some students taking their very first honors or AP course. Anyone that's going to take an honors or AP course is going to take their first one at some point in time. So this is not the first time that students are taking their first class. The difference this year, and I'm kind of surprised, and that's why I want to clarify, I'm kind of surprised there's not more of those. We have 17 more students this coming year than we had this year taking a first honors or AP course in their education career. I'm surprised that's not higher, given the mandates and stuff that we're under. So I just want to clarify, is that sort of the world we're living in?
And I think that...
Perhaps that's why so few people tuned in to the webinar last Wednesday. I'm surprised that, you know, when we listen to the public comment tonight, there is the narrative being pushed that everybody in the community is up in arms over this. Yet, when we are proactive about doing a webinar that provides all of the information that we're being asked for, we have 45 people. Of all of the students that we serve in our district, we have 45 people tune in. So I don't want to jump on the bandwagon of a narrative that possibly doesn't exist.
I also would like to say that I think it is possible to do some more communication. However, I think it's a testament to our proactive communication that so many students who were recommended for so many honors classes did not stay in those classes and put schedules together that they felt were appropriate for them. So there are certainly students asking questions, parents asking questions. I think John and I are acknowledging that. That is very common in any time we communicate complex issues, we always hear questions back. We are acknowledging that those questions remain, and I think we can look at ways to proactively, again, offer families an opportunity to have dialogue with us. I don't know, at this point in the year, with, if it's possible to check in with all 145 individual families and students. That may not be something that our system has capacity to do, but some larger scale communication with families, especially families new to Diagonal Movement, new to honors, is something we could certainly consider.
All of those numbers are new to Diagonal Movement, new to honors. I mean, we have 255 and 145 of them are taking more than two class, two or more classes. I mean, I would say that we would start, we have students that are now taking Registered for Four, and start then.
And remember, some of those, some of those are going to happen naturally just by curriculum. So they're students not necessarily selecting an honors class where a college prep exists. If you pursue Spanish and you move to upper-level world languages, by default, it's an honors class. So we, each individual student has nuances to their schedule. The other thing I wanted to say, Ms. Culcarney, we are talking about, really, we should be talking about advanced level to college prep, because it is very rare in our curriculum where we have a college prep, an honors, and an AP in the exact same subject area. Typically, if we have an honors class, we don't have an AP. Or if we do have an honors, it is not sequential to the AP necessarily. For example, you have Spanish III honors and Spanish IV honors, and then you have an AP. If you're dropping out of AP Spanish, right, you might go to Spanish IV, but you wouldn't be going to Spanish III. So there are some nuances in our curriculum, and in general, as a general rule, students take either honors or AP in a subject area, and then their choice, if they didn't want to stay in that course, would be to move to college prep. So if there is an AP to an honors available, then that is a downshift. So for example, at Libertyville High School, we still have US History honors, and we have AP US History. It is possible for a student to drop AP US History and move into honors US History. It's just we don't have that type of curriculum setup for the majority of our classes across most schools.
Let me just say one thing. No, I understand that, and I just want to close one loop. If, and I understand that it's hard to find individuals and have their individual feet, you know, reach out, which is why I think about creating something that is simple. Five questions for class that anyone can consume. You know, when we, in the medical device space, when you have product labels, they say the language should be a third-grade reading level. Someone who's at a third-grade reading level should be able to interpret and understand content about medical devices. So keep it really simple, not a lot of stuff. Some simple, same questions that you can add to the mix, and send it out, everybody will benefit from it. I think although we think there's 17 students that are new, there is a fear in the community, because we started out saying, it's all these changes, and we're doing all these great things, that gives, that gives people the perception that this is huge, and, oh my goodness, this is a lot. And that's kind of where we've got some confusion and fear out there. So I mean, some of that communication is also on us, because that's how we went with it.
I want to point out, we do have one really positive opportunity that we have scheduled coming up in May, and it isn't necess, I look at it as sort of the growth mindset way of thinking about this. We're inviting all of our new to AP and honors families to come to a Diagonal Mover Celebration the Monday before our board meeting, to try and make sure they're clear on expectations and knowing what supports are available. So we're trying to maybe, rather than say, are you sure you want to do this? Like, yes, thank you for taking this opportunity. Here's what you need to know about how to access the things that we're putting in place. So the other thing is, as the master schedule is built, there is an opportunity, and Ollie and Andy do communicate with any student, saying, okay, now that we know what courses are which period, or this or that, here's your last opportunity to make any adjustments to your schedule. And we will make sure that all students are clear, that that is one of the options they could take. But we are trying to make sure we're proactively communicating with the families who we've said, yes, you do meet the criteria to take us up on these honors and AP classes, and oh, by the way, we not only think you can be successful, we're going to let you know about all the things that are there for you. So I don't think the board had been informed about that event. We are hosting it right before the board meeting, so that we hope some of those parents will come and make themselves present here and let you know how much they value the opportunity for their students to be a part of our honors and AP program.
We are tending to get to the point where we're going to make a motion, so I'd like to continue the questions that are going to get us to where we know where we're going to vote on that motion. Excuse me. I just want to say from my point of view, as a former educator, I strongly support the Accelerated Placement Act. I think it's the right thing to do. So when the community says we need to pause, and we're at a point where I don't believe that we can pause, I feel that we need to continue this work. We need to continue doing the best that we can to go towards a thing that we have already selected. I don't see a pause happening there. Very much the same way for the Heterogeneous classes. We're not, I don't see us changing that. It seems that the community very loudly said tonight, pause. When we make a motion tonight, we will either pause or not pause.
So the motion that is in the agenda is to either approve the recommended staffing plan.
Correct.
Which version?
Right.
Or not approve it. So that's the matter that's in front of us tonight.
Yes, right. So I'm just trying to be clear that what we're doing tonight is supporting the decision that we have already made. So I would like to get towards some of those questions on the nitty-gritty, if I may. You said, teachers are going to come before school to do tutoring. Do we have any idea how many teachers are interested in taking a stipend? Is that like, that's something that's really doable? Are we saying that that's going to happen, or do we know that that can happen?
We have not yet done any type of formal inquiry into that. But when we talk about before school, teachers are there. They get there either at 7:45 or 8:15. So that would be kind of in their before-school window. If a teacher were to take this stipend, we would need them to arrive. I think we set the time Bryant was 7:50 to 8:30, if I'm not mistaken, or 8:35. We have precedent for that time based on offering MASH supervision before school. So we would align the time with that, and then we would be seeking teachers. But we have not, at this time, done a formal inquiry to staff. I believe perhaps it was discussed in general with some union leadership.
You also said there would be additional chunks of time. Where does that come from?
So one of the models is for course teams to have some districts call them a planning day or a retreat day or something like that.
So we get subs in and release them for a day?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, I mean, some do subs, some report, depends on how many kids we're talking about. But yes, we would definitely, the point is to have asynchronous learning going on while the teachers have time to collaborate.
Okay.
Are we taking other questions?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Slide 12, please. Can you go to slide 12? Are we able to see that? When we look at the teachers that were a part of this process, one thing that we heard tonight is, one of the biggest concerns are the teachers not in support of the way that we've chosen to move forward and how we're implementing this. How many of the teachers were, I know you have a list... How many of the teachers were, I, I know you have a list. How much of what the teacher, the teachers recommended are included in this plan?
This plan, in terms of the, I, I think this plan incorporates ideas that we heard. An example of that is when we met with our MTSS team, they said, you know, if you are going to provide support for executive functioning, that needs to be part of the high impact tutoring. It was initially part of the other model. So that's an example of input that we heard that we incorporated right into the model. The other input that we, we have heard is just for our entire plan that we shared with you the other night, shared that with our, our staff and asked for their feedback on that and asked what support they would need moving forward.
So when we heard from the heterogeneous group that reflective of 54 teachers and they said that they had created already interventions, how much of those interventions are included in this plan?
I don't know what that is referring to.
That was referring to the union comment today who said that the heterogeneous teachers had created some kind of an intervention plan as we were going through this. How much of that plan is reflective in what you're being asked? We are being asked to approve tonight.
I think what you're referring to is the example that I tried to clarify in my comments. The intervention plan was Algebra I teachers at Libertyville coming together and designing a separate possible intervention model for the math teachers at Vernon Hills.
Okay, so I didn't understand.
Yeah. Yeah, so no, it was the two different Algebra I teams working in, in silos rather than together. And so in honoring one school's work, we inadvertently didn't show support for the other school's work. And that is, again, not a place where any of us would want to be. And we are working with the department chairs and other people to make sure that from the get-go, collaboration between both buildings is, is the, is the, not just preferred, but the way we need to be operating. So Ms. Loschewski was referring to that. And again, she did bring that to my attention and I did explain that to her last Friday. So it was difficult to hear that the other side of the argument wasn't shared tonight for the whole board to understand the full context of that.
And just to add some information on this, the, the plan that, what we heard from our teachers as we shared, and it was the document that we brought to you last time, which was the, all of the support that we're putting in place for students, for staff, for parents. The thing we heard from our teachers over and over again is the desire to have a support like this in place. They didn't give us specific saying, we want a tutoring, we want a, they said, we want, we want two things. We want, one, we, we believe this support needs to be in place and we recognize this isn't a huge increase, but this is something that has been happening in this district for some time. And we want support in place for those diagonal teachers so it enhances the support we can provide as teachers. The second thing they said is we want clear understandings of how these will operate, which we're trying to create as well. We first have to get a model in place and then continue working on building out those, that information for our staff. So those are the things we heard very clearly from them. The other things they shared was the desire for some time or some opportunities to work in half days, some of those things that you see built in this as well.
But the, the staffing request that you're asking for us, one, you know, the first versus two, are these numbers based on actual student enrollment in courses or is this more of a general sense of need?
No, this is actual enrollment in courses and I'll let the principals talk to that. They went and, and looked at every one of their courses to say, where do they feel? And again, it is important to realize at this point in the schedule, in a high school schedule, is a very complex thing to build. And you are going to have, there's going to be a certain amount of movement, but it is not an unlimited amount of movement. But what they're saying is, based on the amount of registrations that we have and the amount of diagonal movers we have, do we feel like there is sufficient room for that limited support that we would provide? And these were the courses as they analyzed those that they felt we needed to add.
Excuse me. Can you also go to slide 20? I'm still confused on slide 26. The tier two ESP, did, I, I missed that and I'm, I'm not, what is, for the executive functioning, is that the additional pause? On slide 25, I'm sorry, 25.
I think it's on this slide, it's on both slides, but it's, it goes back to what Dr. Kalentis was talking about that, or maybe it was Dr. Wiggly talking about what the MTSS team was saying is that if, look, if, if you're going to provide support for students who are moving diagonally, it can't be just the academic intervention. It can't be just, let's work on the content, let's work on the concepts, let's work on the standards. It has to also include those other executive functioning types of skills, which include time management, study skills. And so it's building in resource, that's built in to the pause resource for the, the striving ninth graders, but it's not anywhere else built into 10th, 11th, 12th graders. So this is an attempt to meet that. There, there's another example of feedback given and then put into the plan to try to meet a need. And the need, the need was executive functioning is bigger than just those ninth grade striving learners. We got to figure out how to get it to those kids that need it, that are diagonally moving or not. Like, just because you're diagonally moving doesn't mean you're the only ones that can go to these drop-in areas. Other students can get that support as well. And that's where that executive functioning support would be.
And that can be assigned under the tier two.
That's right.
Teacher.
That's the idea.
To be monitored.
Mm-hmm.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Slide 32. Considering additional time for specific aspects of grading guidelines for teams requesting additional time with professional development to fully implement 25, 26. I don't, I don't have a deadline. So 25, 26, as far as I'm concerned, that's a maybe still. I don't mind extending that out further to take time for those teachers who are working to get it together. So I'm a little, I'm a little worried that that says 25, 26 for full implementation. And also, I want to know that if we've decided that we're going to pause implementing grading, that we're going to be honest about that, that we're not going to say, all right, teams that were thinking that you were going to be ready, you thought you were going to be ready, you're going to go ahead and jump next year. If they still felt like they needed additional time, I would be okay with them taking additional time. So I'm not exactly sure what considering additional time means. Now, I know that you haven't met yet. I know that you're going to bring a recommendation later. I'm putting my two cents in because it's on this slide. But as far as I'm concerned, we don't have to push this. I think it's important, I think it's really important that we have teams of teachers that have consistent grading skills. I also think there's a lot of good in what it, what is in there, but it's also very different from what some teachers are doing. And it's a shift, so I'm okay taking time on that shift.
And then I agree with, with that.
I think we do have to at least acknowledge the student contribution that we heard tonight about some students' concerns that the existing system is just not, doesn't always feel fair. And while I agree with my board colleagues that we don't need to have a hard and fast deadline and that we would like to implement grading guidelines that make sense, that feel like we've taken the time to establish them correctly, I also really appreciate all the work that the grading and assessment team has done. And I don't want to in any way discourage that work from continuing or being completed. The work that is done is very, the work that has been completed is very important and it reflects a multi-dimensional team of ed professionals that have spent a lot of time trying to get us where we need to be and in line with what our peer districts have done in the case of Stevenson High School 20 years ago. So let, let's, let's not.
According to one of our people last week, and she was right when she said it, it took 10 years.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it should take 10 years. So I disagree with her that we should take that long. I think it's important work. I think we should move forward. But I think this is one of the areas where we can listen to the struggles that our teachers are having with implementing a number of things simultaneously. This is one place where we can slow down.
Agreed.
I agree with that too, but let me just try to bring us back to a focus here. The, the item on the agenda is the staffing plan for the supports, which I completely support. It's, it's being able to put in place this plan of hiring and staffing the resources to help our students, which is super important. I only have one question with this as we move forward. And that is, we're recommending, the administration is recommending option one. We had option two, which certainly is much more expensive, but could potentially have greater impact, especially the, the idea of the tutoring before school versus having some, some certified teachers during those lunch periods, being able to address those. So my question is, how easy is this to scale as we need it? You know, I get back to what I said before. We, we've done this. We've had students diagonally move before. We've had lots of students take their first AP course. This is not new, but this is additional resources. And I think it'll be a positive thing for our students and, and will, will we go to increase our, our, our success rates. But we don't know 100% if that's enough or if this is enough. So the question is, how easy is this to scale midstream? Or is this a commitment for the year, that kind of thing?
I'd invite other thoughts too. I think the thing about this is it's going to be new. We have, we have work to do to put the stipend in place, to get agreement on what that is. That'll need to be put in place. We'll need to seek interest in doing so. But it is, the one thing for sure is it is scalable. If there is that interest in place and we have a, a good MOU in place to support it, if we see more need, even beyond what we have here, that is something that this administration can come back and recommend additional support.
What makes it more scalable? If, if we approve the higher amount and then you can use it in a lesser amount and scale it up if needed? Or is it more scalable if we approve the lower amount and then you come back to us with a greater need if that's demonstrated? Is, how do those two compare?
And I think you, when you're looking at the, the first one, you're starting with the before school supports. And then if there's a need, you build up. I think if you start, hey, this is all we're going to offer and go here, but you know, we don't want to, I, I think, offer too much or not be able to do it and then try to say we're going backwards. I think it's easier to add on. So start with something that's manageable, start with something we think we can start with, and then, and then go from there. So I think it's easier to scale up, again, with the board's willingness to, if we come back in, you know, beginning of the school year or two.
I, I think a compromise could also be for the board to have the motion to start with the first proposal and to have periodic updates or for the administration to be able to scale up to, not to exceed a certain amount. So almost like how we build into contingency into our staffing budget, which we still have, we say, here's how many we need and we need 1.0 more for move-ins over the summer. We could say, here's what we're going to start with. And the board has pre-approved the ability for administration to add additional stipends up to a certain amount.
I would add to that, at least as we're looking at this, if we go with option one, to do, discuss that stipend, the lunchtime stipend, discuss all the stipends, even though we might not put those in place right away. Because what might happen is, we might find out that nobody wants to come before school and to have the ability to shift. Or maybe, you know, we do have people before school, but maybe not as much and we can shift those stipend positions to lunchtime if that works out for teacher. You know, I don't know all the, the logistics of that. But at least if we've had that conversation upfront and this is what it will take, this is what is expected, this is what the stipend is worth and, and that kind of thing, we have that conversation all upfront and we can make those adjustments as needed later on.
Conversations or authorization upfront? Because we're having the conversation now. Are you saying that we could authorize up to a certain amount more now? Because I'm, I'm comfortable authorizing it as is. And then if you need more, come back at a later board meeting in October and say, we want to add two more. That'd be fine.
Right. We've reached an agreement with the teachers union. We have an MOU, we have a need. We don't, maybe we don't need six. Maybe right now we will start with two and you can come back to us later and say, well, we need two more.
Or can we kind of float this idea of proposing up to a certain amount, that we're comfortable with up to a certain amount and kind of use that as a little bit of wiggle room if we need to scale up?
I mean, I think everybody on us, on the board is willing to support you with whatever staff you need. I guess the question becomes, how are you going to tell us you need it? How are you evaluating the need, the effectiveness? Who is asking for it that's not getting? I mean, so these are going to be the things, I, I would say, if you are telling me that you want to start with two, with two, or format one, but we authorize up to format two, even if we need, what we're all saying is the same, but it's going to be more important of, well, how are you showing us that we need the need? I mean, that's what I would be looking for and I'm sure you're going to.
And it's, I think it's similar to when we come with a staffing plan for certified staff, we come in with a contingency. And then last year, you know, years passed, we had benchmarks in place so that we looked at those classes with move-ins and that's when we added science at Libertyville, algebra at Libertyville, EL at Vernon Hills and built up. So we had benchmarks in place, working with Ollie and Andy over the summer and added that into the contingency. So I think we can do the same thing here, that we could put benchmarks in place, we start the year and then, you know, we, we go to our team and, you know, look at the, the data of the students that are in there, look at the data of our students that, lunch periods and, and we can scale up from there.
I mean, I'd be comfortable with authorizing the higher amount, but with getting periodic reporting of demand versus supply. What's the demand we are getting? Because at the end of the day, what we need to show is that how are the needs of the students being met? And what are the demands from them? And how are we meeting those demands? So I'm comfortable authorizing the higher amount, but let us show how we are using it because that would be impactful data for the students and the families and everybody in the district.
And these will be assigned, these are assigned resources. So in terms of how they are working, how, how many times they're being used, that'll be part of this plan. That I, that I'm confident we will be able to generate as we go through this plan.
I mean, I do, I understand that this is a staffing plan and I'm willing to support staffing requests as we always have. But you're combining a staffing plan to a plan that is more than just staffing. And by voting yes for staffing, it appears that I am saying that this is a plan. I don't think this is a perfect plan. I think we've been, we've talked about that and even you've said it's not a perfect, you know, I, I think we're all agreeing this is a starting point. And there are some significant gaps in the plan that I would, by voting for staffing does not mean that this plan is complete yet and we are going to work towards a completion. But I, I, that's where the conversation needs to continue. I understand we want to get on and make a vote about staffing because we want to support our students, but there are still gaps in the plan that we need to be talking about.
I've been trying to think about it. It's late and I haven't slept much, so I'm trying to be coherent here, but this to me is similar to when we approved the staffing plan back in March where it was this very specific need that was time-based without knowing the full picture. And we're kind of in that same spot again where now let's, in this big jigsaw puzzle, let's approve this piece and I still don't know what the big picture looks like. But if I say no to this because I don't see the full picture, then it looks like I don't support having support for our, our students. So I'm like in a really tough spot here. I mean, something I'd ask for, for example, is what is our plan B? What happens if we don't get enough staff signing up for stipends? When will you know that by? What do you do if that doesn't happen? What happens if you don't get enough staff? I mean, these are all things that I still would like to know. I don't know when, what's the avenue to discuss the rest of that plan if we said year or if we said, yeah, I need for this today.
I mean, let's dig into that a little bit. What are these gaps that are being identified by the board? Cara, you spoke about, you know, you feel like something may still be amiss here. This isn't the full picture, so on and all. And I'm looking at this and, you know, I have young kids. They're not in high school. I know what my Plan Bs are when they have issues academically, right? As high school parents, I think it's valuable to hear your perspective. What is missing exactly? Because I keep looking at this and to me, I'm in its infancy. If this is, please, actually strike that from the record, not its infancy, in its form, as it stands right here. This, I'm not seeing the deficit personally.
Well, one as a plan, as I said last time, is that we always need to have our Plan B. And that this is all still, I'll still maintain, is pretty optimistic, given that now we are one day away from May starting up. So that makes me a little uncomfortable still. Although I would want teachers, the additional support for our students, the fact that it's not, it's still a jello state makes me very uncomfortable. In terms of specific needs, let me wear my glasses because I can't see this anymore. But the supports we're talking about are still geared, you know, towards college prep. At least that's what I'm reading this as. But, you know, AP, if students need help in AP, they're still largely dependent on their teachers. Now, AP is college level. You're expected to be more independent. Well, do the families who are signed up for classes understand that? What about honors help, right? I mean, I, different conversations, I walk away with a different understanding of exactly which course level will this support? Is it only for striving learners or college prep? Or is it also going to help with honors and AP?
I think it's, I think it's going to help with all of the levels. I think what it's hard, for someone who doesn't live a high school curriculum every day, I mean, you say honors level, but there's ninth grade honors level and almost every math teacher can help with a ninth grade honors geometry question. But then you have AP, BC calculus. That's a harder ask for the average, for most. Most high school math teachers haven't taught BC calculus. So they're going to struggle to answer questions on BC. Kids know that. Kids know that. One of the resources, so what do we have in place for those kids? One of the resources we have is peer tutors, who are living those exact same or have lived those exact same classes. That's where Varsity Tutor comes in, because all, any course is accessible through that. So there's a little bit of hit and miss when you talk about humans in tutorial positions, because it depends so much on what their experience is, which is why it's so hard to staff oral language, because you have Spanish teachers, you have German teachers, you have French teachers, you have Latin teachers. And one of them in a lab isn't going to necessarily meet the need of every kid that walks into that space. So there, it's not a perfect science. It depends who would be willing to be a tutor and what period they would be willing to do it. Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to have to be, well, let's get approval to do it, see what kind of reaction we get and how many people are even interested in that before we can see what that even looks like for a student walking into that space.
That's fair. But then I want to make sure that we continue to build out the other aspects of the plan, like our contingency of what if all the things that we say we will do, if those don't actually pan out? What if a large population of students actually do want to change their class come June or worse in October? Those types of things I personally feel are still missing. And yes, ordinarily, maybe that would have been normal life, but now that we've made it a big deal.
I think what you need to know is we've, so back to Cara's question about where are we intentional about which classes we ask for extra FTE? And what we did is, we studied normal years. And why, as we've said, normal years have always had diagonal movement. And we've been able to track the number of kids that drop down from those spaces. This year, there are more, not an astronomical number more, but there are more. So the delta of diagonal movers is more. There are more students in some of these courses than there have been before. And what we've done is built in space for that delta, right? If every one of those kids moved, decided to move down, would we have space for them? Probably not. It's a finite number. But we've put space in there, knowing that some kids are properly placed. They've got the work ethic. They understand what productive struggle is. They're going to make it. But there will be some that are going to need to shift down. And we have space for that some.
And I have to voice, I appreciate the concern and certainly your perspective, Dr. G. I am not in favor of asking our administrative team to come up with a Plan B. I am in favor of asking them to continue to monitor and hold them accountable for making adjustments as we see how this MTSS plan works.
For what it's worth, I don't think this is a plan that has major gaps in it. Now, I may be naive, again, as a young, as a parent of young kids. But what I do know is that I'm a certified high school teacher. I'm looking at these and I'm pretty satisfied with this. I guess, I think this kind of goes back around to communication and maybe a little bit of PR challenge that we, you know, dealt with early on when we started kind of hearing the community get concerned about the bigger everything. And I think that's what needs addressing. I don't know if we've packaged this well enough for consumption. And again, I'm looking here and if it's that, you know, if we just, we need a contingency for our contingency for our contingency, I'm not sure if that's worth reinventing the wheel we just invented here. I'm comfortable with this plan as it stands right now. May it need improvement in the future? Absolutely. Will we only know that once we kind of implement? Yeah, probably. And I think additional educator feedback is critical in making sure that our teachers are comfortable with this plan as it stands and how it actually plays out as the semester goes on. I think those are key voices in our collaborative effort to make sure that this works. But we got to start somewhere. And I'm comfortable starting here.
Cara, did she have anything else?
No, I think I've been, I mean, it's 11 o'clock. I think I've made my, where I think there are gaps and where there are needs to be improved. But I do think the elephant in the room, Cara, is what you just said. The number one person to execute this plan are our teachers. And if we don't start hearing from our teachers that they are feeling positive about what we're being asked, we're asking them to do, that's what we have to start hearing. We've been hearing for 12 months, overwhelmed from students. You're pushing, I mean, we've had these conversations. This plan doesn't address all of that, but it's a start.
I have a quick question about the Albert IO. Have we tested that? Do we have students interact with it? I mean, I looked at it. It's got everything, but content-wise, it has everything.
So we have had teachers utilize it. We have not, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong at Vernon Hills. At Libertyville, we have not tested it on like a large-scale plan. We've, when we've used it, it's been when a teacher has identified it as a tool for their students in their class. And so any, and we haven't used Varsity Tutors either on a large scale. So part of what we're going to have to build into both schools is any tool we use, whether it's the tutoring, the drop-in support, we're going to have to, or the software resources. We need to very clearly create our method for evaluation that includes teacher voice and student voice. How is it working? What is strong about it? Where are some of the gaps with it? Which would then allow us to identify if there are other tools that may be more appropriate for us to invest in or to pursue.
And it's a one-year contract?
We haven't actually contracted with them. So that was part of our, here's examples of things we could use. I actually had a meeting with them today just to learn more about it. And what I would say is, our Varsity Tutor, I think, is a, is something that makes a lot of sense to me to move forward with. Albert IO is a teacher-centered platform. And that, to me, says, if we're going to go in that direction, it needs to, back to teacher voice, teacher input. And we're going to need to have staff development available for that. So based on what I learned today, terrific resource, not something I would necessarily add to our plans at this moment, because I think it adds, it would detract us from the central things that we're trying to do. I think it could be a terrific resource a year or two from now with a lot of input and work that we're doing. That is something, actually, as we continue to evolve our plans, we put a strike through at this moment and put it in the parking lot because of the staff development that would be required for that. Varsity Tutor available, something we're looking at. I think it would be a wonderful thing to use.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm looking for now is a motion to approve the recommended staffing plan to increase academic support for students with expanded MASH/ARC staff and new two-tier teacher tutors.
Batson, so move. That's for $549,200.
Hessel, second.
Is there further discussion, such as, did you want to change an authorized amount or let them come back to us later?
I think it was not a well-developed recommendation at this moment. I'd prefer to let admin come back to us.
I agree.
With what that additional amount might look like as opposed to trying to invent it on the spot.
Yeah.
I agree. And the only thing I want to clarify is that we're not approving everything in that PowerPoint. We're just approving the table.
The staffing plan, correct.
Just had to say that.
Carol, roll call.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. We're moving on to the consolidated district plan. Dr. Wegley?
Yep. So you see that in front of you, the consolidated district plan is required for us to share with the Illinois State Board of Education and be approved by the Board of Education for us to then apply for our title grants. And we've had input from several individuals, thanks to Kelly, Dan, and Jessica Fernandez, helping us build this out. I noted when we talked about this in the committee meeting that we've added Title III as a grant. But this is basically doing a needs assessment and then what we're going to be applying the grant for. And we feel this is in actually very good shape to approve and then send forth.
I'm sorry, did you say, was there any change from when we discussed at a committee?
None.
Okay, thank you.
None at all.
Can I have a motion to approve the 2425 Consolidated District Plan as presented?
Drumke, motion to approve the 2425 Consolidated District Plan as presented.
Batson, second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the 2425 textbook adoption requests.
Yeah, so these are in front of you and they are summarized in the table. We have six textbooks that are new and resources that are new to the district that are coming forward. You see that that is a amount that's quite a bit less than we normally see. The reason for that is because a lot of the textbooks that are being approved actually are just being renewed. So they're things that we already have. These are the new textbooks and resources that we are bringing and have talked about them extensively in teaching and learning and certainly recommend approval.
Very good. Can I have a motion to approve the 2425 textbook adoption request as presented?
Batson, so move.
Hessel, second.
Cara, or excuse me, Carol, roll call.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Educational tour requests.
We have two additional requests that could be on what we've talked about in committee. And one is choir and theater students going to London, England and Scotland. And that'll be spring break of next year. And that has the required insurance that we ask them to have, the cancellation insurance as a note, similar to what we talked about the last international travel. It's a 48-hour instead of 24, but they have that insurance. That looks like a fantastic trip, not sponsored by the district, but certainly something that our students will participate in. And then the second trip is one that we just thank our coach for continuing. This is a Vernon Hills girls' basketball. Sounds like tradition to me. They'll be going June 21st to 23rd of this year. The cost of $175 a student.
Can I have a motion to approve two educational tour requests as presented?
Drumke, so move.
Batson, second.
Roll call, Carol.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the, I should say, motion passes. Moving on to employment of employees.
These are employment of employees that were not presented in the consent agenda at the last P and P. So some additional employment of employees, one of them being recommendation to hire Ray Albin as the next principal at Libertyville High School.
You stayed a long time tonight, Ray.
So I'm wondering if we should, just in terms of point of order, if we need to have a motion and a second, if there's further discussion before we take the vote? Is that how we should proceed?
Typically, yes.
Is that okay to proceed that way? Okay. So Hessel, I move to approve the employment items as listed.
Carmichael. Batson, second. Sorry?
Okay. Do we have any discussion before we vote on the employment items?
Just congratulations.
Again, want to really thank Ray for the years of service as a teacher, as an instructional leader, as an assistant principal, and now he'll have the opportunity to lead the entire building as principal. And throughout the entire hiring process, he shined. And only as Ray can do, had that wonderful combination of being humble, yet assertive in a way that speaks how he'll be supportive of all students. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Ready to hear your 15 minutes of prepared notes. Shall we vote?
Shall vote.
Let's do a roll call. Can we have a roll call?
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Ray, you're welcome to make a few, you're welcome to come to the mic and make a few comments.
You're also welcome to say that you have waited long enough and you're ready to go home.
Really, just a thank you. I wrote one thing, so I'll say this. Libertyville High School has been a special place to me. It has over 100-year tradition of excellence in academics, fine arts, athletics, and student activities. It's a place where our students are challenged to be daring and where they're supported in their journey by a caring and highly skilled staff of educators and support personnel. I believe that Wildcats of the past, the present, and those to come in the future will discover that which I already know, uncommon success begins at LHS. Thank you.
Okay, the item F, the annual educational support staff staffing report.
This is our staffing report for educational support staff that we discussed in detail at the P and P committee. Again, these are separate items from what you approved in this other piece, but looking again at Libertyville High School with our student and programmatic needs to reduce two special services aides and a pause aide. Addition was the three pause lab aides in math, science, and English. I'll come back to the other addition there of the special services admin assistant. Vernon Hills, reduction in one world languages ab, lab aide, languages aide, and the reduction in the one pause aide, additional three pause lab aides, math, science, and English. Again, that was what was previously discussed at P and P. The other, the other additions at Libertyville and Vernon Hills was an addition of the one special services administrative assistant with the, if you scroll all the way down, where we were reducing a student services administrative assistant position at district office. So that's a 12-month position at district office that we would like to recommend to put two 10-month positions in, one being at each building to help better, better serve our special services departments. And so that was our recommendation. So they're kind of all tied in together. So the addition at Libertyville, at Vernon Hills, with the reduction in district office. And then a transition pathways, a addition of one job coach special services aide. And so overall, for ESP, additional 3.0 across the district.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the annual educational support staff staffing report as presented?
Hessel, so moved.
Batson, second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Intergovernmental, is that me still, intergovernmental agreement?
The IGA out of F and F.
Oh, it's, still P and P.
Okay.
I think so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Personnel.
So Bryant?
Hold on here, sorry, clicking, intergovernmental agreement for hearing itinerant, we discussed this, I think.
Yes.
Back in, not March, maybe, maybe before then, but we, one of the things is that we were contracting our hearing itinerant with CEDOL, and we were looking at ways to ensure that we have a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher to work with our students. We struggled to get teachers, or this person from CEDOL and District 120, which is Moneline, also struggled to get. And so just like we partnered on our PT with District 70 and District 120, this would be District 120 and us working together. And so this is our intergovernmental agreement for next year. It took us a little while, we were going back and forth with Moneline, but we have it finalized, and that's why it's brought to you now, so.
Can I have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with District 120 sharing of a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher as presented?
Benjamin, so moved.
Batson, second.
No other discussion, roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Motion passes, and now we are moving on to the 24-25 proposed committee and board meeting schedules. There was an amendment to this.
There were some changes recommended at the committee meeting, and we incorporated those into this updated plan.
Right. Are there any questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the annual committee and board meeting schedule as presented?
Colcarney, so moved. Hessel, second.
Carol?
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion passes, and I will turn it over to Dr. Batson.
Thank you. First, on the F and F agenda here is the recommendation for a three-year extension with Lakeside for our transportation services. It's a three-year renewal with 6% increases each year. Dan, any additional?
Well done, I have nothing further to add.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the three-year contract renewal with Lakeside Transportation as presented, that was Carmichael.
Drumkey, second. Quick question.
Yeah, sure.
I was looking at our accounts payable, I believe. And I saw that there were, as typical, fuel costs. Does this cover fuel? Are those fuel expenses different, or do you know what I'm saying, is fuel included in this fee?
Fuel is not included. We buy fuel separately, and if, when we buy it, we are able to avoid some taxes, and so it's cheaper for us to buy our fuel than to get it through Lakeside, because Lakeside, because they're not a government entity, we would incur those taxes, so it's just been, we do it internally, so.
They're two separate expenses.
They are.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve the bid with Dunleavy Construction for the demolition of structures at 9/11 and 9/15 West Park Avenue. It's for a total cost of $57,450, although if you notice in the commentary below, there's some additional costs associated with this, it's not just tearing the buildings down. So the total will be $108,731, but we're voting to bid on the, or we're voting for the bid for $57,450 with Dunleavy.
Yeah, this, hard to believe that we're here. This has been years.
Many.
Years in the making, and so we're finally at that last stage. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Nothing else to add.
Carmichael moved to approve the bid with Dunleavy Construction Company for the demolition of the structures at 9/11 and 9/15 West Park Avenue for $57,450. Colcarney, second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is approve an alternate bid for the floor ceiling of the LHS cafeteria in the amount of $28,500. Dan, you have anything to add to that?
No, just that I'm noticing there's not an attachment, so that must be an oversight on my part. It's the same attachment as our committee meeting, or the special meeting we had, so it, nothing's different. At that time, we weren't ready to move forward with the floor ceiling, now we are.
And this is that temporary fix for a year, because they're going to be walking on it for a year?
Yes.
Hessel, I move to approve the alternate to seal the LHS floor with Gilbane for straw builders for $28,500.
Carmichael, second.
Any further questions, comments?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the 24-25 textbook adoption requests. Last on the agenda here is most, a motion to approve the bid and authority to enter into a contract with HES for custodial maintenance and ground services.
Yeah, this is a significant contract for us. We've been with Airmark since, or ServiceMaster even before them, since 1998, and so a change like this is pretty significant. We've been trying to address service issues and looking at the overall needs for us, and we felt that going out to bid was appropriate. It's been difficult to kind of find the right time, there is no good time to do it. There's always a lot going on, as you can tell by the time we have tonight, there's a lot going on. And so we went through this process that we, to be honest, I was a little nervous that this timeline was a little too aggressive, but we are now on the other side, and I feel like we've done our due diligence in terms of putting together a good bid package, answering bidders' questions, giving tours of our facilities, weighing the bids, and more than just price, price has to be primary majority, but not the only thing, and so I believe we were able to account for that, as well as being able to go on tours and interview and get another sense of our providers. And so HES is the contractor, we believe, that is going to be able to meet our needs. And it'll be, it ends up being probably a little bit less than what we're paying now, which is, I don't get to say very often. So they're very excited, they've met with the staff, one of our biggest concerns is making sure that we're caring for the staff that's here, because we have, we have, you know, over 50 people that are employed through Airmark that are here every day, and most of the time, if you walk through billing, you'd never know that they're employed that way. We want to keep them and make sure that they're well taken care of, and HES has given us every indication that they'll be doing that. And so they'll have meetings starting this week, Thursday, to help transition the Airmark staff over to HES.
Excellent, thank you.
And the total here is 3.134, well, $3,134,727 and 9 cents. Not to cut out the 9 cents. Can we have a motion, please?
Hessel, I move to approve the bid and authority to enter a contract with HES for custodial maintenance and ground services for $3,134,727 and 9 cents.
Carmichael, second.
Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
If I could just say, um, sorry, Carol, my motion approved.
Motion approved?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Jim.
That's okay.
Apologize, I was just excited and want to just thank the board. This is, in my opinion, an action the board and our district administration has taken to help our district walk its talk about caring for its employees and the people who help serve our students and staff each day. This is something that I believe will make an improvement on our custodial and building and grounds team and their ability to be supported in their work in a much better way by their corporate structure, so thank you for that.
Okay, that concludes Facilities and Finance.
Okay, thank you, everyone. For discussion, we do have a first reading of board policies that we punted last time. I think we probably need to punt it again. Cut it out.
So these are still, these are still first reading, and you still have a second reading, and we'll have this at our next P and P for a second reading. We will be bringing another batch for first reading at the next P and P, but then these will come for a second reading and approval at the May board meeting. So I do encourage you to try to look through those. If you have questions, let me know, and if you want to reach out to me, I'm more than happy to go. Most of them are very minor updates.
And I had emailed you before the last committee meeting with three minor questions that you answered. I would like to discuss those at the second reading, just for the record, but there's nothing that we need to spend, were my questions that is necessary to spend time on tonight.
I have questions, but I can send them to you directly.
Perfect.
And then I just want to be sure, we do discuss those at second reading, just so that for the benefit of policy and fidelity and doing our job in a transparent way, we do mention them, but it doesn't have to be tonight.
Hmm.
Next, for discussion is the fiscal year '25 preliminary budget.
Yeah, I just wanted, I know I sent this to the board, but also want to make sure that this is part of our public meeting as well, that we, you know, in terms of our timeline, what we try to shoot for is April, have a preliminary, May have a tentative budget, and then June have a final budget for adoption. And so this tentative budget has, or this preliminary budget has a, right around a $1.2 million surplus in there, revenues sitting at right around 5%. And then expenditures, there's even preliminarily, there's still a lot of expenditures we don't, I don't totally know yet. And so, but any staffing, you're right, it change, things change. So that's preliminary, and then once we get into May, I'll have tentative, which will be very, very specific numbers, but this is like our first shot at this. This is better than our outlook when we did our financial projections, just, and the reason for this is, you got to remember, when you're talking $100 million, the surplus is $100 million of revenue dollars matching to $100 million of expenditure dollars, it's really 200 billion of numbers have to kind of match up, and so a $200,000 change here and a $200,000 change here, those can add up really quickly on a, on a budget of this size. And so it could just easily as quickly change by the time we get to tentative as well. And then, as a reminder, the 1.2 million target is, is the, is the target that you should be hitting to maintain your financial health. That's as it is right now, probably starting in fiscal '26, that number should be closer to 1.3 million, just so you know, that is, that would be the target, because as your expenditures grow, you need to have more money in the bank to kind of have your three months covered, even if you think personally, right? You need three months of savings, well, if my expenditures go up, I need more in my savings, so no different at an organizational level.
And so this is going to come back, it'll come to the F and F, the tentative will be voted on, no action tonight, but the tentative will be voted on, and then?
There's no vote until the final adoption, so this will just appear, I think, at pretty much every meeting between now and the end of June.
Okay.
And next time we see that?
I didn't know if there was action next time or not.
Okay. The next time we see this in May, will it have the numbers that we approved tonight for the additional staff MTSS included?
Yes.
Thank you.
And whatever I can figure out in terms of contingency, so I'm trying, I got to think through that a little bit, too, but yeah, it'll be incorporated. It'll, the goal is, whenever you see it, it'll have as much information, all the information that we know about up to that point, including names of all the people and all the positions that we know about and what their actual pay is going to be, not an estimate at that point.
Thank you.
And when we see this next time, if you don't mind giving further detail on, I'm looking at your operating funds PDF, page two, item 310 Professional Services and 312 Professional Learning, just kind of what is included in those two items.
So when I give you the tentative information, it'll go all the way down to the account level, you'll know every single account number and how much is in there by department and[1674.51] You'll know every single account number and how much is in there by department and all those kinds of things. If you're looking for detail beyond what's, like what's behind that account number, that's a little more difficult to do. Because what I couldn't say, for example, is, let's just say purchase services includes these 50 contracts with these 50 vendors for this amount of money. That's not how, that's not how it's put together. There are components of our system that are based on contracts that I budgeted for, like B&amp;G. I have a spot in our, in our budget for that contract. But I have, we have other, other areas that are not budgeted to that level of detail in the sense that we assign it to purchase services. For example, the buildings are more broadly based and in terms of where we, how we allocate those monies. So I guess it depends on what you're looking for. I mean, I can, I guess you'll see what's in the tentative for May at the, you know, at the committee meeting. And if you're looking for more information, we can try to get you more information for sure. There will be, it will be a lot of information.
That's fine. We can start there and once we see it, I'll be able to visualize it.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Any other questions about the preliminary budget?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Moving on to items for information, the superintendent's report.
So tonight, just a very brief update from Bryant on the social media litigation. We were asked to supply some information to the attorneys, so just.
Yeah, so again, we're working with Franz Law Group out of California. And so they filed the lawsuit on our behalf against the social media companies. So part of that process was for us to complete a plaintiff fact sheet and that's done in the discovery phase. And then that information we supplied to our attorneys. So Dan and I spent time going through that plaintiff fact sheet. It started out with just, you know, facts, general facts about the school district, high school district, number of students, number of staff. But then it got into a little bit more details on what kind of staff we have in regards to social workers, psychologists, counselors here to some discipline numbers over the years and has that increased due to social media, to some of the internet resources that we provide to our students and parents, or policy that we have in place. So just really a lot of background information about our district since 2017, 18. So Dan and I spent time going through that. I worked with Ollie and Andy and the data teams to get a couple data things that I didn't have. And we supplied that all to our lawyers about two weeks ago. So now we just, that's during the discovery phase and now we just, you know, kind of wait for them to go through the process.
And just as a reminder, this, other than staff time, there is no cost to the district to participate in this group litigation.
Correct, yeah.
So we are part of a national suit that is seeking to hold social media companies responsible for changing some of their practices as well as defray some of the costs to public school districts for the SEL costs associated with the mental health crisis.
Correct.
That, and so I just wanted to be sure we acknowledge the cost to the district because of the time that our administrators have put into filling out this fact sheet. And beyond that, I don't think it's going to cost anything much more in terms of administrator time. And we will not see any legal costs until we actually receive money. So moving on to board comments and events.
I think one thing that would be helpful is if people have a preference as to which ceremony they attend. We provided, we provided last year's ceremony attendance. I know some of you like to participate in, you know, go back and forth so you get to experience both schools. Sometimes you have a relative or a close friend who's graduating. So it would help us for the programs to be able to list which board members will be at which graduations.
Okay, speak up.
I try to alternate between schools. So I was at Vernon Hills last year and I'd be happy to go out to Libertyville this year.
Yeah, I want to go to Vernon Hills because next year my daughter will graduate, so I won't get to go to Vernon Hills at all.
I prefer Vernon Hills this year. What's Libertyville last year?
I, I'm going to be out of town, but unfortunately, regrettably, this is one of my favorite things.
Put, put me in, Coach.
I, I don't care. Put me in.
Okay.
Vernon Hills. I attend Vernon.
Either one.
Which one?
Yes.
No, he said Vernon Hills.
Vernon Hills.
Oh, you did say Vernon.
Oh, I don't, wherever you need me. Thank you.
Go on to LHS. It's like going to LHS.
Yeah, I did LHS last year, so I don't care.
So I want to make sure I have this right. So we have the right number. So Middle Ash, Jim, and Sinal at Vernon Hills. So then I would need the other three then at Libertyville to help out. Is that Cara, Cara, and Don?
Yep.
And Lisa's out of town. Okay. And then I need a volunteer from each place who would like to make a few comments and present the, on behalf of the board, you're presenting really the graduates and honoring them. So at LHS.
I don't think Cara's done it yet.
I did it. I did.
You did it? I did it.
People cry.
Has Cara done it yet?
Cara's turn.
She's. So Don was volunteering, is that what?
That is volunteering, is what I heard. He did such a beautiful job.
And then at Vernon Hills, Jim, I heard.
If I have to do a speech, I'll, I'll present the class.
All right. All right, I will communicate this to the building. Thank you very much.
What date is it?
It is.
May 25th. Oh, that was from last year. Sorry, I'm sorry.
May 24th. Thursday, May 23rd, 2024. And then I will get this, and then Kelly DeBrueller will communicate with Cara, Don, and Cara. And then Norm, Nora from Vernon Hills will communicate with Middle Ash, Jim, and Sinal on all the particulars. And so Rosemont is new, so it'll be new to all of us. So, thank you.
Everybody has their gown.
Yeah, I still have mine.
Okay, we have no ISB report or CDAL report?
But this is where I placed, we did receive from IASB, the, no, that's okay. IASB every year places an all-call for districts who may wish to submit a proposal for an IASB resolution. And because this is an IASB thing, we, we have had the opportunity to do that in the past. We, Jim always represents us at the delegate assembly where we consider those things. But I know Lisa has an idea for a resolution and it would need to be something we comment on at the board. So I just wanted to give her the opportunity to say, is this something we should put on a future agenda?
Yeah, so when we had discussed making the change to the calendar to remove non-attendances for religious holidays, we talked about exploring the possibility of putting forth an ISB resolution to include those holidays as non-attendances on a state level. We can discuss it at the committee meeting, but we're going to need consensus in order to do it because we will have to, as a board, pass it as a resolution before we pass it on to ISB.
And then move forward it on, yeah.
So.
Do you recall what the deadline for that?
It's not till June. I have the.
So we have some time.
We have some time. We definitely have some time, but I don't want to, I'm happy to do it if we have consensus, but I don't want to spend any time writing the resolution if we don't have consensus board support that we would pass the resolution because it's required to move on to the ISB level. So we can talk about that at committee next time and just put it on everybody's radar that we will be discussing that.
PMP.
Okay, we have no ISB or CDAL report. We have a list of future agenda items. Is there anything else in addition that we'd like to add to the future agenda items?
I'd like to get teachers' feedback on everything we discussed today as far as the staffing plan. And then do we have enough interest in stipends? I don't know if that's something that you can get an idea of in two weeks.
I, I think that is going to require discussion of an MOU in order to know that. I don't think we will discuss that at the next meeting. Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, is there anything further in terms of future agenda items? If not, we're looking for a motion to convene a closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters under 5ILCS 120/2C2 and employment of employees under 5ILCS 120/2C1.
Carmichael so moved.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Stay in closed session. When we return, it will be only to adjourn, not to take any action.
Yeah, I know the rest of Martin.
Okay, I mean, we have a motion and second to return to open session. It is 12:27 a.m.
Carmichael so moved.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we just need a motion and second to adjourn the board meeting.
Carmichael motion to adjourn. Batson, second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who, uh, who's second?
Cara. I did. Or we, we tied.
Yeah.
Either one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Don't forget you.
We are adjourned.
So I will send you the note with a story from Dr. Herman about no religious.